Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
It is Thursday, June 26, 2025. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the County Board of County Commissioners here for Johnson County, Kansas. Thank you for attending our Board of County Commissioners meeting or watching online. We'll start today by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I'm here as well. All are present, so we have a quorum in a duly constituted meeting. If you'd all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for being here today. If you are in person, would you check your cellphone or any other noise-making device that you may have brought with you? And make sure that it's turned to silent. We sure appreciate your cooperation and your patience. I'm going to start today with a dais from the podium. As we wrap up our month of June here in Johnson County, it's with great pride and purpose that we gather to recognize and celebrate Pride Month. It's a time that we honor the history, resilience, and the contributions of the LGBTQ+ community in Johnson County. Celebrating Pride Month reflects our shared values of equality, dignity, inclusion, and respect for all people. It commemorates the courage of those who have fought for LGBTQ rights and reminds us of the ongoing journey toward justice and full equality. From the Stonewall uprising in 1969 to moments forward, brave individuals and communities have stood up to be seen and heard and to demand the rights that everyone deserves. We take a moment to recognize those who continue to fight by building inclusive spaces and advocating for economic equity. The Mid-America LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce is one such leader. The chamber stands at the forefront of progress in our region, providing critical support and visibility to LGBTQ+ professionals and businesses here in the metropolitan region. We acknowledge the chamber's commitment to advancing business equality and business partnerships that foster innovation, equity, and success for LGBTQ+ individuals across the business landscape. We appreciate that their work ensures that our communities and workplaces are not only welcoming but thriving because of diversity and opportunity. We stand with Johnson County's LGBTQ+ neighbors, friends, coworkers, and family members. We recognize that every person, regardless of who they love or how they identify, should feel safe, seen, and celebrated in our community. Therefore, on behalf of Johnson County, I am proud to again proclaim the month of June as Pride Month. May it be a time of celebration, reflection, and collective action. I'm welcome to honor Kate Nielsen, the President of the Mid-America LGBT Chamber, to share a few words and to accept a proclamation. Kate?
Good morning. Look how pretty that is. Good morning and thank you. My name is Kate Nielsen. My pronouns are she/her. In addition to serving as the President of the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce, I'm also the owner of On Tap, a local business based right here in Kansas City Metro. So I speak today both as a business owner and as someone deeply committed to advancing economic opportunity for the LGBTQ+ community. On behalf of our chamber, I want to thank the Johnson County Commission and Chairman Mike Kelly for this proclamation and for recognizing the importance of inclusive economic growth. This acknowledgement matters, not just to our chamber, but to the many LGBTQ+ and allied businesses, owners, professionals, entrepreneurs, and our corporate partners who drive innovation, job creation, and prosperity throughout Johnson County and throughout the Kansas City Metro. Even in challenging times, we're seeing encouraging signs. More LGBTQ+ businesses are stepping forward to be certified, and more companies are joining the chamber, demonstrating their commitment to equity and meaningful inclusion. We remain focused on our mission to support, connect, and elevate LGBTQ+ and allied businesses, professionals, and our corporate partners, because when those people and organizations succeed, our entire region moves forward. Thank you again for this honor and for standing with our community.
Thank you all very much for joining us today. At this time, we'll turn to our public comment portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for speakers to address county matters that do not otherwise appear on today's action agenda. We do ask that if folks want to speak on an item that is on the action agenda, that you register with that action item. If you do happen to speak on an action item during this general public comment session, we're going to ask that you refrain at this time and limit your comments to those of other county concern. When you do come to the dais, we ask that you state your name and the community in which you reside. Comments are limited to two minutes. There's a clock that appears on either side of the dais to assist you with that time limit. If you happen to go beyond that two-minute time limit, we are going to ask that you conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive or impertinent or profane or slanderous or that would insult or demean any person or groups of persons. If we happen to stray into that kind of public comment, I'll provide a warning. If it continues, we will ask that you step aside from the dais. We do allow public comments virtually, so I'll ask the clerk when we're ready to call on our virtual public commentators.
We're ready.
Very good. First is Cassie Woolworth.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Fantastic. Cassie Woolworth, 306 North Pinion, Olathe, Kansas. Been here before. Thank you for the proclamation, Pride Month. Very, very excited, thrilled that we have a DNI committee because it makes, the DEI committee makes a big difference. We need to be accepting of everybody. Hell hath no fury like religious people getting religion wrong. So if you fancy yourself a religious person and you want to know if you might be getting it wrong, here's a few clues. If you believe that God's pigmentation, gender, sexual orientation, ethnicity, personality exclusively mirror your own, if you find yourself invoking God's name to deny other people healthcare, food, safety, marriage, or basic human rights, if you believe that God values your child more than a child across the street, across town, or across the world, if you believe your religious beliefs should be legislated or compulsory for others, if your religion requires that others share that religion to have proximity to you, if you believe any politician is anointed by God, if the voice you have in your head for God seems to miraculously always align with your preferences and your prejudices, if God loves who you love and hates who you hate, hmm, you might be getting religion wrong. Religion at its best can be a beautiful thing. It's a path to experiencing peace, doing life better, and becoming the kind of person the world needs. At the end of the day, though, it doesn't matter how right you are. If you don't leave the planet more decent, more generous, and more compassionate, you might have the religion of hate.
Ms. Woolworth, thank you. Your time's expired. We appreciate your comments, and at this time, we'll go to those who have registered in person in the order that they registered. We'll start with Ben Hobart.
Ben Hobart, Westwood Hills. Chairman Kelly and Commissioner, your decision to proceed with the $5,500,000 toilet travesty with the rain catchment for toilets gives citizens, taxpayers, a true distressing insight into the thought process of a majority of this board. If something is an absolute mistake or the result of a negligent process, you correct it and move on. A majority of this board will never correct bad decisions. I demonstrated that the amount of rainwater recaptured will be negligible because of the limited 10,000-gallon tank storage, the fact that the usage of the facility is nominal, the fact that Olathe only gets rainfall on 97 days a year, and the fact that when we hit our rainy seasons, it pours and the system can't recapture the water. Your response to my cora request was incomplete. The response said the system wasn't finally designed, but the storage was anticipated to be 10,000 gallons. How many flushes are assumed in a workweek? Response: We do not have information at this time. How could Mr. Barron do a payback without knowing the benefit, that is, the water used? The answer: He couldn't. Citizens should be aware that when a majority of this board is presented with facts demonstrating an absolute waste of taxpayer dollars, a majority of this board embraces the waste. So if waste is clearly presented to the taxpayers, how much waste is there in the budget which is not made visible to taxpayers? Citizens should know this board worships agenda items, regionalism, and government by cronyism, to the detriment of citizens of Johnson County. All of our pocketbooks are at risk because of a majority of this board's spendaholic, wasteful habits. It is a crying shame. Thank you.
Next is Donald Stout.
Good morning. I'm Donald Stout from Overland Park, Kansas, and I thank you for this opportunity to comment on issues of homelessness. Also, it was reported recently that the United States has 770,000 homeless people, and additional spokesmen said this number is not accurate because there's more unreported. But it's interesting to note that the 770,000 is the highest homeless statistic ever recorded. I was also very happy to see that a cooling center was open, and we thank the Overland Park Christian Church, and we thank Commissioners Hasslick and Brewer for being in attendance. Your attendance was really welcome. Also, I thank Barb for providing a meal there, and it was nice on June 10th, June 10th, June 10th, I can't hardly say June then, that there was a cooling center and we could celebrate this day with cooling air and abundant water and etc., etc. It's similar to what I said the last time when I was up here, that it would be nice to have a day's shelter in which we could provide homeless people a shower and a hot meal, and we're hoping that that will be something that will be in the future. Let's see, what else do I want to say? Also, I, we've talked about this, I've heard other people talk about it, but it's interesting to note that Johnson County has the highest price of housing in its history, and it's continuing to shut out many people that want to be in a home, such as myself or an apartment.
Thank you, Mr. Stout. Your time's expired. We appreciate your comment, but we want to be fair to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Brian Perkins.
Good morning. Brian Perkins here. I'm currently homeless as well, residing in Olathe, Kansas. Yet, like Don stated, thank you Commissioners Brewer and Hanslick for coming out to see us and spending time with us. It's moments like those that mean a lot, that taking time out of your day to spend time with us at the cooling center speaks higher volumes than you're aware of. Excuse me. Saturday morning, I read an article, it's on Fox 4 KC about the grant fund initiative. The efforts are not going forward in Hope Faith in Missouri. And as I'm reading this, I thought to myself, how many lives could have been saved? How many wrong choices could have been avoided with positive outcomes if the resources, the proper resources were there in place before? So we can't fix what already has happened in Johnson County, but we can start today and we can move forward. As we, but it's hard for us because we're managing a lot of full-time jobs right now, multiple. We are going through fatigue, we're managing the weather, we're managing safety, we're managing hunger and thirst, we're managing the hope of the bus arriving on time, can't express that enough. We rely on that, and it's not reliable. But as we're managing our full-time jobs, and there's so many, there's anxiety, fear, depression, hoping you're going to sleep good tonight. We need to get something going, because I mean, we need to get something like transitional housing, that like we talked about, there's case management, but it's for, to start something to go forward. We appreciate the cooling center, but let's start there and keep going. You have the right people here, but we're managing a lot of full-time jobs now. It's hard for us to have the will to get a job right now, because we're managing a lot at the moment. Thank you.
Next is Barb McEver.
Good morning. I'm Barb McEver. I live in Olathe, Kansas. I think most of you know that I co-founded and run Project 1020, the only cold-weather shelter in Johnson County for adults who don't have minor children with them. I just want to make a couple comments. I, over the last 12 years or so, I've been to lots of meetings concerning homelessness, and we talk about it, and then it's kind of dropped, and then nothing is done, and you know, time passes, years pass, and nothing is done. You know, as disappointing as it was that the homeless service center didn't go through, I just can't emphasize enough that we need to keep that momentum going. We need to continue to educate people. We need, it needs to be in the forefront of people's minds so we can, so we can get something going. And over the years, as I've said in these meetings, and last, over the last few weeks as I've been here listening, a couple weeks ago, something struck me that I just cannot get out of my mind, and it's the $22 million parking garage. One of the comments that one of you made was that it would enhance the lives of the public. What about the lives of the people that have nowhere to go? They don't have safety, they don't have a roof over their head. What about Donald, who went to seek shelter underneath an awning and was told that he had to leave because it was pouring down rain? I think we need to turn our focus, and I think we should be ashamed. We need to enhance the lives of people that have nowhere to go safe, and I bet you, if they suck, if, suck, if they sought out shelter in the parking garage, it wouldn't be long before the police were called and they would be asked to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Harkness.
Jeff Harkness, Overland Park, Chairman, Commissioners. I got to leave early, and I got to sit with my dad, so let me, hopefully get my speech in. 1977 was my base year to study for this time in our nation's history. Now, if, if you look back at the, if you were in the Johnson County wastewater sewer district back in 1977, a sewer tax went on your tax bill. Now we're running it more like a utility and a bimonthly type of situation on the previous year's water usage. So just look at the back of your Johnson County wastewater bill, and it'll explain how your rates are adjusted. Back then, my grandma's basement began flooding in Roland Park in 1977 because of the development upstream on Row, around Katz and the old AMP. Looks like we've got that problem under control, and we're going to correct, and hopefully it's all corrected by the time the Nelson plant comes to, comes, comes online. 1977, the fall of that year, I was in eighth grade when the 30-year Treasury bombs came out. Now, you thought the world was going to end, just put it off for the next generation of kids. That was kind of the common thought. My personal opinion, that's kind of what jump-started the Department of Education. Now, that was then, and this is now. Now, I think what we need to do is combine the Health Department, the education, and housing, and put it all together and let the savings trickle down to our states and localities. Now, the Full Employment Act of 1946 says the number-one goal of the US government is full employment without inflation. The dual mandate is such. Back in Volcker and Greenspan's day, it was a stable banking system, but as we've diversified and balanced-funded our deficit away, it's more the stock market at this point, I was in, I started business school in the mid-'80s. Diversification was being oversold as we diversified our portfolios and workforce, and at the same time, our conglomerates were divesting their assets. Now, this was kind of an extension of, if you give a country food, they pay, they feed their people for a day, but if you give them jobs in industries, they feed their people for a lifetime. And this is good, I think, but I think that's kind of been backfiring on us, so I hope we bring them jobs back and start leading by example.
Mr. Harkness, your time's expired, but thank you very much for the comment.
Right, thank you.
That's all the public commentators that we have registered for the general public comment session. At this time, I have a few notes for the record, and thanks for your patience. I will be executing two easements to Evergy as part of the Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvement Project under the May 10, 2023 memorandum of understanding with Evergy regarding the relocation of Evergy overhead electric lines. Additionally, I will be signing Administrative Resolution Number WD 25-022. This is enlarging the privately-financed sewer district and providing for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the consolidated lateral sewer district in the vicinity of 6912 Walmer Street. We have a consent agenda, but I will note that there has been requests to remove Items 6, 7, 8, and 10 from that consent agenda, 6, 7, 8, and 10. So at this time, I'd ask if there is a motion to adopt the consent agenda as so amended. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
Allenbrand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allenbrand. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Okay, then we'll start with number six, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read item number six into the record.
Consider authorizing a contract authority increase for design engineering services for a new air traffic control tower at New Century Air Center IXD per the term and supply contract with Burns &amp; McDonnell for the siding, design, bidding, and construction services for a new air traffic control tower at the New Century Air Center in the amount of $854,020 for a revised total contract amount not to exceed $3 million and to delegate a signatory authority of the current and subsequent authorizations and any amendments or change orders up to the $3 million level of authority to the Executive Director of the Johnson County Airport Commission.
Brian Johnson is here from the Johnson County Airport to discuss this item. Mr. Johnson, welcome back. How about an update on the tower's progress?
Certainly. Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, good to see all of you. Great news as it relates to the air traffic control tower, and specifically, I'd like to talk about funding. So we know historically, over the last two or three years, there's been a significant effort by this board, by the Airport Commission and staff to secure federal funding for that tower. So we went through that process, put it into play. Senator Ren did a wonderful job in Washington, and what we're really looking for now is where is, where are those funds? And the good news, as early as last week, I got notice and have conveyed that through to the county manager's office, that we should see the $15 million here within the next two weeks as we finalize the legal documents to have those funds transferred over to our, to our bank account, so to speak. So, good news there from a funding standpoint, construction standpoint. We've had to pivot a little bit because of some of these NEPA review processes, which includes an archaeological study, site prep, etc. So that's really what we're here for today, is to tee up the need to really keep this on pace. This, these additional items that you, that are included in the briefing sheet will actually cause us, you know, another probably two months in time to get to the point where we can engage fully in the design process and get underway into construction. So if you look at the timeline we're on right now, we're aiming for fourth quarter 2027. Now we're looking at first quarter 2028, when it'll be fully functional and operational.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for the update. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I just can't begin to tell my fellow commissioners how
that tower. So we went through that process, put it into play. Senator Ren did a wonderful job in, in Washington, and what we're really looking for now is where is, where are those funds? And, and the good news, uh, as, as early as last week, I got notice, and I've conveyed that through, uh, to the county manager's office, that, uh, we should see the, the $15 million here within the next two weeks as we final of the legal documents, uh, to have those funds transferred over, uh, to our, to our bank account, so to speak. So, good news there from a funding standpoint, construction standpoint. Uh, we, we've had to pivot a little bit because of some of these, uh, NEPA review, uh, processes, which includes an archaeological, uh, study, uh, site prep, et cetera. So that's really what we're, we're here for today, is to tee up, um, the need to, to really keep this on pace. Uh, this, these additional items that, that you, that are included in the briefing sheet will actually cause us, uh, you know, another probably two months, uh, in time, uh, to, to get to the point where we can, uh, engage fully in the design process and, and get underway into construction. So if you look at the timeline we're on right now, uh, we're aiming for fourth quarter, uh, 2027. Now, we're looking at first quarter, 2028, when it'll be fully functional and operational.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for the update. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Um, well, I just can't begin to tell my fellow commissioners how important this tower is, and how it's needed, um, being a national airport, and with the traffic that's at that airport, and the other tower being not adequate at this day in needs, with all the incidents that are happening out there, we need to be on top of our game. I, um, really want to get this, um, completed. I wish we could have that tower completed by the World Cup, but that's not possible. So when you're ready, Chair, I have a motion.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, you, you started to answer my question, but I, let me frame it. I, I look at this, and if my math is right, it's about a 28% increase over the original, and I was looking at the analysis, and there's a statement that says, "It was determined that a full environmental assessment and, um, archaeological survey would be required for the completion of phase," and, and I get that, but you, you, I think you started to answer it. I was looking for some elaboration on, when did this come to our attention, and who, and how, and, and why? Uh, because it's a pretty big increase, and just, I, I just couldn't glean that from the briefing sheet. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Uh, certainly, and, and thank you for asking the question. I think this is a really important detail, not just in this project, but even in our subsequent project, um, the Runway 1836, uh, which will come a little bit later. Uh, so really, the, the sequence of events is, is really driven, uh, by a series of agency, um, conversations, whether that's with FAA, whether that's with the, uh, uh, SHIPO, uh, group. Uh, there, there's a significant effort when you're looking at, um-
Sorry, what's a SHIPO group?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that, that is the, the acronym for, um, or the FAA, I don't remember the actual acronym.
State Historical Preservation Office.
Thank you, yeah. So there's multiple, um, layers and, um, discussions that occur to ensure, from a federal level, and state level, and local level, that we've accounted for not only the desire to build on that site, but the history of that site, and the clearing of that site from any archaeological significance. So, uh, initially, we thought, because of the nature of the site being small, uh, we thought an environmental review would be appropriate, uh, but as, uh, the, the dialogue continued, uh, the, the different nations of the Pawnee and the Osage, uh, got involved as, as well as the, the FAA, and hence, that's why we're, we're doing what we're doing.
And if something is discovered, what may or may not happen?
Good question. Uh, it depends, so I, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Ashcraft, that, that's the direction I was going. I recall when we had, a few months ago, a joint meeting of the Airport, uh, Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, and we had an update on this project subsequent to an opportunity for us to, to tour the current tower and to see some of the limitations, because I think that tower goes back to the 1940s?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, so I know that you shared with us during that presentation that you, that this was new emerging information, uh, that these additional assessments were gonna need to be done. So I'm assuming between then and now, you had to cost that out, and, and, and this is just coming full circle on what you alerted us to a few months ago about this impending addition to the project due to the, the, the reasons you just gave us?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just wanting to put all my puzzle pieces together to make sure I was tracking correctly.
Sure.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. How are we doing on the radar front? Is that part of this at all?
So, uh, yes, that is a part of, uh, this project. Right now, they're going through and identifying all the equipment that will go into that tower, uh, which is a fairly lengthy process as well, and, and we'll know more, uh, we'll have more detail actually on the actual types of technology and equipment that will go in that tower. But the expectation is some form of radar, uh, also to include what's called ADS-B, which is a little more common or familiar to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand, how about your motion?
Thank you, Chair. I move to authorize a contract authority increase for design engineering service for a new air traffic control tower at New Century Air Center, XD, per the term and supply contract with Burns and McDonnell for sitting, design, bidding, and construction services for the new air traffic control tower at New Century Air Center in the amount of $854,020 for revert, revised total contract amount not to exceed $3 million, and to delegate signature, signatory authorization for the current and sequential authorizations of any amendments and change orders up to $3 million level of authority to the Executive Director of Johnson County Airport Commission.
Myers, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Myers. I'll just note for the record, it's IXD. Um, thank you. All good. Um, is there any further questions or comments on this one? If not, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That is correct.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll now ask clerk to read item seven.
IFB number 2025-013. Consider authorizing a contract with Brian Olmeyer Construction Company, Inc., for the bridge construction of Bridge J dot 200 dash 1 dot 000, 207th Street, over Little Bull Creek, in the amount not to exceed $1,184,054.25.
Thank you very much. Ryan Sims here to present the item. Welcome back, sir.
Yes, good morning. Ryan Sims with Public Works. So we do have an upcoming replacement for a bridge on 207th Street over Little Bull Creek. Uh, the existing structure is deteriorating and in need of replacement. Uh, the new structure will be a long-lasting structure with an appropriate waterway opening. The type of bridge to be used for replacement is a more unique type because of the most cost-effective, uh, structure for this location. This allowed us to shorten the overall bridge length with an anticipated cost savings of about 15 to 20%. However, due to the unique nature of the bridge type to be constructed, there are fewer contractors in the area that have the experience and equipment necessary to complete this project. Uh, the only bidder, Brian Olmeyer Construction, has the experience and equipment necessary to complete this project, and they have provided successful projects for the county in the past. If there are any questions at this time, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Sims, thank you very much. I imagine this came off the consent agenda because of just the single, um, bidder on this project. Though 794 firms were notified and four firms reviewed the IFP, um, I appreciate you telling us about the unique nature of the process and therefore the contractor. Uh, looks like this is under the engineer's estimate. Um, who is our on-call engineer that provides the estimates?
Uh, so, uh, we used HDR engineering. They provided an engineer estimate, but we also double-checked that with our in-house staff as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Sims, um, help me understand, the engineering estimate, uh, traditionally has been, uh, fairly conservative, uh, to make sure we have enough coverage for the project. So was it based upon, um, this, uh, unique design that Brian Olmeyer was providing, or was it based upon the more traditional design for bridges that used in Johnson County?
So the cost estimate was based off unit prices, regardless of bridge type. So we look at, uh, you know, for earthwork materials, pavement materials, miscellaneous materials. So regardless, we look at, uh, historical bid tab data to provide us our cost estimate moving forward.
So, is that, uh, predominantly the traditional bridge type, or, I mean, I, I'm looking at this, and I just wonder, how do we, uh, respond to the concern that this selection criteria was somehow tilted towards this bridge type and this vendor? Make sure we have a level playing field. How do, how do we adjust for that?
Uh, so when we look at bridge types, one of the things we want to look at is the impacts of the channel itself. So the type of bridge that we chose has much less impacts than the channel itself for the bridge that we're replacing. So typically, our bridges have piers underneath in the channel. This simple-span bridge type that we chose does not have any piers, so it helps to, uh, help with the overall efficiency.
And that was part of the original design specifications to-
Correct. So we looked at all alternatives, but we chose this type of bridge type.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Brewer.
So just to put a finer point on it, when you released the RFP, you contemplated this design as being one of the acceptable types of designs that somebody could build to construct.
That, that is correct. Yeah, we, we don't specify exactly what type of bridge type. We just say bridge replacement, and then it's the consultant's job to provide, uh, design and analysis, looking at all our, all our alternatives possible.
And taking that approach then allows you to capture the widest band of different recommendations, different options, and then do you do diligence to, to find out which design best meets the need?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any further questions. Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hanslick, go ahead.
Uh, I was going to offer to make the motion.
Please.
I move to authorize a contract with Brian Olmeyer Construction Company, Inc., for bridge construction of Bridge J dot 200 to 1.000, 207th Street, over Little Bull Creek, in the amount not to exceed $1,184,054.25 per IFB 2025-013.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Are there further questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Uh, aye. We have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good, thank you. Uh, would clerk read item eight?
Resolution number 035-25. Consider approving Resolution Number 035-25, appointing the following nominees to the Johnson County Developmental Supports Governing Board. First District Commissioner nomination, Kyle Russell. Second District Commissioner nomination, Debbie Williams. Third District Commissioner nomination, Michael Hughes. Fourth District Commissioner nomination, Ines Yunus. Fifth District Commissioner nomination, Bertha Gielan. Sixth District Commissioner nomination, John Bartelak, and Chair nomination, Melissa Footlick.
Uh, thank you very much. I ask that this one be removed out of an abundance of caution. I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote and ask Commissioner Hanslick, our vice chair, to go ahead and, uh, run this item.
Absolutely. Uh, Ms. Trent, it indicates that this is your item. Is there anything you would like to say about it?
Commissioners, this is our, um, uh, in compliance with your rules of order of the appointment process of board members. As the board is aware, resolutions now are being utilized to track better the appointment process of the board members. It was a request of this board to outline each member in the motion, which we have done. This went through the 10-day comment period, um, and at this point, um, nothing further to add. This is, uh, generated from a reorganization of the board and appointments to those board.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Madam Chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
Right. Are there any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, please go ahead with the motion, Commissioner Myers.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution Number 035-25, appointing the following nominees to the Johnson County Developmental Supports Governing Board. First District Commissioner nomination, Kyle Russell. Second District Commissioner nomination, Debbie Williams. Third District, Third District Commissioner nomination, Michael Hughes. Fourth District Commissioner nomination, Enes Yanis. Fifth District Commissioner nomination, Bertha Gielan. Sixth District Commissioner nomination, John Bartelak, and the Chair nomination, Melissa Footlick.
Allen Brand, second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions?
It's Gian, but that's-
Gian, okay.
Close enough.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, uh, if the clerk would please call the roll for item number eight.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly has recused himself.
So I have six votes in favor, one recusal. Does that, uh, match what you have counted?
It does.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. That passes, and I will turn the meeting back over to, uh, Chair Kelly.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hanslick. We'll move on at this time to item 10, and ask clerk to read item 10, please.
Resolution Number 076-25. Consider approving Resolution Number 076-25, declaring a vacancy of the Third District appointee and appointing Sam Whitehead as the Third District nominee to the Airport Commission.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be pulled just for procedural, so we could have a vote on the appointment.
Okay. Commissioner Brewer.
I'll be happy to make the motion when appropriate.
I believe it's appropriate.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution Number 076-25, declaring a vacancy of the Third District appointee and appointing the Third District nominee, Sam Whitehead, to the Airport Commission.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Not seeing the questions with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Well, then we'll move on at this time to item 11, and ask the clerk to read item 11.
Resolution Number WD-25-019. Continue a public hearing and consider authorizing funds for the Spring Hill system buy-in in an amount not to exceed $2 million, and consider approving an agreement with the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, for reimbursement of Johnson County's system buy-in and transfer of a portion of the JCW sewer system to the city.
Thank you very much. Um, we're here with Aaron Witt. Welcome back, sir. Um, we had an agenda review on this item, um, and then was continued from our last meeting on June 12th. Uh, is there anything further that you wanted to provide or present at this time regarding the item?
Uh, good morning, Aaron Witt with Wastewater. Um, if, if you'd like, I could give a real brief, uh, overview of what the project is, but I also wanted to talk to, uh, the cost benefit from the project. We didn't talk to that before. Um, so it's really about cost avoidance, um, for JCW at this point. We have, uh, two pump stations that serve this area along with five miles of sewer main that pumps this flow, uh, over to our New Century Air Center facility, and we have, uh, the rehabilitation of those facilities in our capital plan, and that's around about $14 million in today's dollars. Uh, so from the capital perspective, the, uh, $2 million buy-in that we're proposing, um, that will lessen the impact on, on the residents there, that's a net $12 million savings in our capital plan by, by executing this agreement. From the operating perspective, uh, power costs, uh, for those stations is around $11,000 a year, and then about $340,000 for the treatment of that flow. So roughly, in operating costs, about $350,000 annually. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna ask you to step back. We are reconvening a public hearing that was, uh, previously opened, and so there's an opportunity for anybody in the public who wants to discuss this item to do so. I know one, uh, has registered for that, uh, so we'll call on Mr. Hobart.
Ben Hobart, the briefing sheet and the resolution for this matter are incomplete, do not full, and do not fully apprise taxpayers of the value being transferred, and whether or not fair compensation is being received for such value. I have the following comments. One, Johnson County is paying $2 million as a buy-in for Spring Hill to expand its gravity sewer system. The briefing sheet says that this board, quote, "Consider approving an agreement with the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, for reimbursement of Johnson County's systems buy-in and transfer of a portion of the JCW sewer system to the city." In my reading of the Cooperative Agreement for Sewer Service between the City of Spring Hill, Kansas and Johnson County, Kansas, I did not see any provision which details when and how Spring Hill will reimburse the $2 million to the county. In fact, I saw no mention of reimbursement in that agreement. Two, what is the value of the five miles of sewer mains, sewer lines, easements, and other property interests that are being transferred to Spring Hill? Three, why isn't there an itemization of the value being transferred? Four, it appears to me that this board is requested to authorize a deal without all ask- to me that this board is requested to authorize a deal without all aspects and costs of the deal being set forth for taxpayers, and this board to make a reasoned judgment as to whether fair value is being received for the sewer assets and service area being transferred to Spring Hill. Thank you for receiving my comments.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and whether you registered or not, there's an opportunity for anybody that wants to step up and comment if they'd like to. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, invite Mr. Witt back for questions, comments from the board. Commissioner Brewer, we'll start with Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mr. Witt, I also want to thank Ms. Pekerek and other staff in the CMO's office and also some time with the City of Spring Hill to discuss in-depth the project. And I'm going to reflect back what I learned, just to affirm that, that I have a clear understanding. You had two pump stations that were in the pipeline to be renovated and brought up to date. That cost, as you already shared with us, was going to be around $14 million. Over about a two-year process, I believe, there was conversation about if there's a different way to do this. And Spring Hill was also in a process of having to do some expansion with their own system, and they are downhill of the water flow area that we're looking at. So when we thought, when we went through the process of how to best manage all of this, the opportunity to collaborate together afforded us a cost saving, afforded us not having to retire those pump stations and not having to renovate those pump stations. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will not have to rehabilitate them. As part of the project, at the end of the project, we will take those pump stations out so they're no longer serving those.
So if I'm taking them out, are they an asset of value that I'm still using, or they are an asset that I'm retiring because to go forward and renovate them is a higher price tag than to take a different option?
Yes. Rehabilitating them is a higher price tag, but we will salvage those for the assets that we can use out of those facilities, but then we'll demolish those so that the neighborhoods aren't seeing the pump stations there.
And so those assets then could be reutilized maybe in other facilities within the county?
There's potential that there's some assets that could be reused.
And when we talk about a forced sewer main, that means we're moving water uphill?
Yes.
And that's more expensive than moving water downhill?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate just a little bit of clarification of the processes that you went through to discuss and to think ahead about this item. The $350,000, is that a go-forward cost? We have the $2 million investment to help create the response that's going to replace the two pump stations, to do the collaboration with Spring Hill. Then Spring Hill, they then own those assets and they're responsible for maintaining those assets?
Yes.
And the $350,000 that you mentioned, is that our, is that our portion of helping to maintain those assets, or is that a savings? I wasn't...
That's a savings on our part. So that's an operating cost that we currently have to pump those flows to the facility and treat them. So that's a savings.
So in addition of saving about $12 million not to renovate those two pump stations and to take this other alternative, we also save some of that O and M cost, go-forward cost, through this relationship with Spring Hill, and our buy-in for this relationship is $2 million. And the benefit they get in this combined system is some of those users then become their ratepayers.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft, I think you were next, and then Commissioner Alan Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Brewer, thank you for that framing, because the casual read of the briefing sheet, you cannot glean that. I had the opportunity to visit with staff, so I appreciated the briefing that Mr. Witt and his staff gave me on this. I think, just a casual reading, the term reimbursement plants certain ideas that really, I don't know if that's a term of art, but doesn't necessarily capture the economic benefit for Johnson County or for wastewater. And I understand that, and I understand the commenter's question about the economics there, but I'm comfortable with the cost-benefit analysis. The question I had, though, Mr. Witt, was more of a process question. As you may remember, years ago, when Norton Creek, the subdivision, was put in and the county approved that, it was, I believe it was stated that the county would provide sewer in perpetuity. Now, things change, and I'm not objecting to that, but because of that implied or stated relationship, we're now wanting to change. And I'm just wondering, have, do you feel that we've fully communicated with the residents as well as the city and other involved parties that this change is appropriate and they're fully considered?
I'll start with the residents on that piece. The plan is, well, the city and Johnson County Wastewater will have joint communication with the residents following the execution of the agreement so that they're moving forward with the project. So that plan's in place. As far as the entities in the area, the southwestern portion of the county has multiple service providers in those areas. It's Gardner, Edgerton, Olathe, Spring Hill, and Johnson County Wastewater all have interest in the area. And so over the past couple of years, all of the entities have been together talking about what's the right way to serve that area. We've had those meetings with the Corps of Engineers, Kansas Department Health and Environment, Kansas Water Office have been a part of those. And we're actually looking at a study of what's the right long-term plan for how that area can be served. As part of that, so there'll be a study that's underway right now. There was an RFP process that the Corps is executing, and so we haven't been given any notification of where they're at with that process. It should be getting close to being finished. But ultimately, the goal of that is to say, how do we get treated affluent from the southwestern portion of the county out around the Hillsdale watershed and the Hillsdale reservoir so that the nutrients are impacting the water quality of that water resource that we have.
All right. Mr. Chairman, may I?
You can.
I appreciate that clarification. I think I'm questioning the, kind of the after-the-fact communication with residents. That potentially can be distressing for people who aren't familiar with the inter machinations of wastewater management in the region. So, but I was wondering, so once this occurs, then those residents, I mean, where do they go for service support? Because the argument I've heard is that they could either go to the Corporation Commission if it's a utility, or their city council if it's a local government utility. But since they live in Olathe and this project is going to be managed by the City of Spring Hill, those residents seem to be in limbo. Am I, I mean, how is that addressed to make sure that they are fully considered? And economically, your argument should be that they should see less costs, but overall, you know, Johnson County Wastewater does pretty good cost-wise.
Yes, yes. And so, great question. So we will have communication with them on what's the process at this point, but also what are the benefits from their perspective. One is, they'll no longer be served by a pump station. They'll be served by gravity, which is a preferred service, and they will no longer have that, those pump stations in their neighborhoods. So that's a benefit. From the buy-in that we're proposing to do takes care of, you know, that portion of cost that could impact the residents. So they won't have that impact cost from the project. It's taken care of, as we're proposing as part of this agreement. And then, as far as rates, you know, we'll be able to explain that. Spring Hill's rates are comparable to JCW. In fact, right now, they're a little bit less than what our rates are. So we'll be able to have those conversations and be able to talk to them about what the project is and what they can expect. It'll be about a two-year process to get that sewer constructed. So our plan is to have early communications to give them the information that we've talked through today, and then obviously, when it gets closer to the time when that system will be transferred over, then have that final conversation with them. But ultimately, when you say, well, who do they call for service? It's the two areas in the yellow are served by gravity, and so they'll know Spring Hill is their service provider at that point, once we do the final transfer at that point.
Okay.
The purple area shown on the map is low-pressure sewers. We will continue to maintain those low-pressure sewers as Johnson County Wastewater, and then we will pay Spring Hill for the treatment of that flow.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Witt, I appreciate in section two of the agreement, the transfer of assets and assumption of responsibility that has been described is contingent upon any number of things, one of which is notice to the property owners. And among other parts of that section, you mentioned that additional information, as Spring Hill and the county mutually determine, will be provided. So I appreciate you taking in mind the comments that provided here about the notice for those residents. Commissioner Alan Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, you just told a little bit of what I was going to say, but thank you for doing that. And I also want to thank my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Brewer, pointing out the cost savings is very, very important. You know, I don't feel that our staff gets enough notoriety for what the savings are and the work that they go through. And, you know, that community was in need, and I want to thank the staff for stepping up, the county manager, the staff, and then also Commissioner Brewer coming forth and helping the community, because that's basically what our jobs are, is to work together. And so you come up with this analysis. Not only are you repurishing parts, but you're also going to be saving, and it's the right thing to do because they've had major issues out there. So I want to thank you for that.
Commissioner Brewer, Commissioner Myers.
I just wanted to do one, thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Alan Brand. I just wanted to put one fine point on a comment that Commissioner Ashcraft kind of asked, and I don't know if it was fully answered, but one, I appreciate in the resolution itself, as Chair has described, there is an intentional way in which you're going to communicate. We sometimes forget that we can't really communicate something we think's going to happen. We really have to wait for a public body to take action so you can communicate what you know is going to happen. As far as standing as a customer, regardless of what jurisdiction I live in, and I'll take one step back, something I learned early on is the fact that we now look at our water and how we handle our water and wastewater through watershed maps, not through jurisdictional maps, because jurisdictional maps are not drawn how water flows. Watershed maps are. And so that's led, to my understanding, to the greater collaboration of the multiple jurisdictions and entities that manage our water needs, be it wastewater or water needs. So regardless if I reside in one city, if I'm a customer, wastewater customer of the Spring Hill wastewater system, I have standing for any concerns and redress of those concerns as a customer of that wastewater system. Would that be a correct interpretation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Demolishing the pump stations, our responsibility or Spring Hill's?
Yes, that'll be our responsibility.
And what does that cost?
We don't have an estimate right now, but it's in the probably hundreds, thousands dollar range for that. Not a huge expense, but we didn't want to put it in their contract, so we specifically said we will communicate with our contractor and be ready to take those out. And per the agreement, we need to do that within a year after the gravity service is in.
Not seeing further comments. Do we have a motion, Commissioner Alan Brand?
I think I'll let Ms. Brewer, since this is in her district, and I'd be happy to second it. I didn't know if you would like to do the motion.
Absolutely. Are we ready for a motion? I move the Board adopt resolution number WD 25 dash 019, authorizing funds for the Spring Hill system buy-in in an amount not to exceed $2 million, and consider approving an agreement with the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, for the reimbursement of Johnson County system buy-in and transfer of a portion of the JCW sewer system to the city.
Alan Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer and seconded by Alan Brand. Final comments or discussions? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Chairman, I think the economics of this effort makes a lot of sense, and I commend staff for that. The hesitancy I have expressed has to do with the communications efforts, and it appears that the citizen notification and involvement has kind of been after the fact, and it would be better if public input was sought before the final decision was made, because it kind of relies on the, or it kind of feeds the concerns people have about government doing things, and then the decision's made before anybody knows about it. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I know we've done better in other circumstances, and I wish we'd done better here. I'm supportive of this, but I do offer that admonition and would encourage staff and the county manager in particular to be sensitive to that going forward.
Commissioner Brewer?
I will push back a little bit, Commissioner Ashcraft, on that interpretation, only because we've offered not one, but two public hearings on this issue. We even determined to table the first public hearing to give more time for folks. I guess my question to you is, are you thinking that in future, that folks are to be noticed via mail if there's something like this going on? I guess I'm looking for the what more that you didn't see.
Well, I appreciate the...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the pushback. I think that a project of this size, making sure that our stakeholders are engaged in whatever mechanism, public hearing in this session, while I think it meets the definition of disclosure, making sure that people understand that are going to be affected long-term on service delivery and potentially costs, would be better suited, better represented if there was more direct communication, if it be by snail mail, or email, or public hearings in the location or near the location of the event, so people have an awareness of it. I think it would be better suited, as well as our governmental partners.
Commissioner Alan Brand?
Chair, well, and Commissioner Brewer, I was involved in, earlier with this and heard complaints from citizens that were having issues in Spring Hill. So I kind of feel the same way, not, you know, it's when people are having trouble and you want to help, and this was before Chair Kelly was here, Chair Eiler at that time asked me, because I have a little bit of Spring Hill, to try to work with them and help them, and they were in need. So I guess I don't understand either, but that's okay. We all have our own. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, the motion's been made and seconded. No further questions. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Alan Brand.
Alan Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
All right, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Witt.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask the clerk to read item 12.
Authorize the publication of the FY 2026 proposed budget at $1,904,65,703. Notify clerk of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and set a public hearing.
Robin Simms, our budget director, here to present the item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Before we begin on the item, I just wanted to take a moment and kind of summarize some key points to the budget since we are here to set the maximum today. As we have mentioned before, this budget does focus on the fundamentals. We've presented a balanced budget with a flat mill levy, and we focused on funding inflationary increases to help maintain our existing services. We did not expand services or fund new services in this budget, and the county manager presented a budget with no new tax-funded positions. This has not happened since the Great Recession, which illustrates the financial constraints that we were working with. We looked at the community survey and the board's focus areas for those services that should be funded and kept intact within our budget. Some examples include continuing the programs for the eviction mediation and the landlord housing voucher incentive program, aligning with the board's focus area of housing. We also funded nutrition services, food pantry and utility assistance, to again help our most vulnerable population in the county. The budget also included funding for equipment replacement for emergency services, and also food and medical contracts for the sheriff and med acts, which align with the health and safety focus area. And finally, we are working with an outside agency to research and identify other possible revenue opportunities aligning with our fiscal health. So again, this is a responsible, balanced budget, maintains existing services... So again, this is a responsible, balanced budget, maintains existing services and addresses some of the inflationary impacts affecting the county, does not address all of them. We will continue to monitor our revenue projections, possible federal and state reductions to the county, and any other items that could affect our budget. And we will always strive to be proactive in our response to ensure that the county's stability maintains. So with that, I'd like to just go into a few details of the actual briefing sheet. So this item accomplishes three things. First, it authorizes the publication of the proposed budget for Johnson County, the amount of $1,904,65,703 for fiscal year 2026. It also notifies the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rates for the county library and park and recreation districts. And finally, the board, for the board to set the public hearing on the proposed budget for Wednesday, August 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Olatha Conference Center. And please note that difference and change in the address of where it will be held. Currently, the total county estimated mill levy is at 24.095 mils. However, you remember, our flat mill levy is 24.125 mils. The reason for this difference is we know that we receive a value in June, but there are pending exemptions between now and November. To be responsible and to align with the board's recommendation for a flat mill levy, we actually lower this initial mill levy, or lower our property tax levy, because we know that when those pending exemptions come through, the value in November will decrease, which will increase our mill levy. And so if we don't make that change now, then our flat mill levy would actually go up. And so we've estimated those exemptions, the impact on the mill levy, and we've actually reduced that ad valorem tax within our budget, so that we know that in November, again, an estimate with those pending exemptions, we would fall within that flat mill levy in November. The total estimated budget, as we've talked about, is $1,904,65,703. It's comprised of approximately 1.4 billion in expenditures, about 500 million in reserves. There were a few changes from the proposed budget that the board of county commissioners made. The first is to add one firewall administrator for our Department of Technology and Innovation, but again, that's within existing resources. So we will be working this fall to reallocate an existing vacant FTE for that position. So again, not having any new tax support. The board also added an additional 127,000 for the utility assistance to make their request whole. Again, that would be within our existing flat mill levy. The addition of 100,000 for nutrition services, again, for those most vulnerable populations within a flat mill levy, and also for 25,000 for food pantries, which again, they're in desperate need of that funding to help maintain and provide food for our, our older population. And then also $8,100 for the United Community Services Human Service Fund for, again, within an existing flat mill levy. And so with that, stand for any questions that the board may have.
Well, Ms. Simms, thank you very much, and thank you to you, Mr. Dapp, and the entire budget team for several hard months of work, presentations to the board, deliberations with the board on this budget. Today, we're here to take a procedural step pursuant to state statute, which sets this maximum expenditure, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and thank you. I forgot to say that as well. This sets the maximum expenditure budget, it does not set the mill levy. We are providing an estimated mill levy based on our published ad valorem taxes. However, you can decrease at a later point, but you cannot increase at this point.
Thank you. We do have a couple of public comments on this, so I wanted to welcome them. First is Ben Hoiberg.
Ben Hoiberg, Westwood Hills, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, there have been more than 10 consecutive years of property tax increases in Johnson County, including this year's proposed budget increase. You have a $1.9 billion budget. I believe eight years ago, it was like 846 million. At the May 1 Committee, the whole regarding future revenue sources, Commissioner Allen Brand stated that, quote, "Increasing people's property taxes, to me, is not an option." If that generally is the case, why are you going to support this maximum budget, which increases people's property taxes? I think what's lost in this process is that tax abatements and tax increment financing are cannibalizing the tax base, and increasingly putting all the onus, all the burden, on citizens who own property as residents. Why doesn't this board articulate and quantify for people what a 10-year tax abatement, which is routinely granted by the county, means in terms of more tax burden being placed on citizens and residents? The reality is that taxing authorities are burying taxpayers with a tax on unrealized capital gains in their residences, which gain will not be realized unless and until they sell their home. Taxpayers get their tax bills and bear the pain of this board's wasteful spending evidenced by the $20 million giveaway to Evergreen Living Innovations, the 5.5 million rain catchment toilet travesty, the explosion of full-time equivalent employees when there has been a nominal increase in county population, about 1% per year. Your spendaholic habits are hurting all citizens in their pocketbooks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phil Bauer.
Hi, my name's Phil Bauer. I live in Leewood in the 1st District, and I'm here today to ask you to not authorize this proposed budget of $1.9 billion. It's a 6.23% increase in property taxes. I hope you all understand that. But I have a solution. Earlier this week, I sent you a spreadsheet showing where we can save taxpayers more than $34 million. This represents a 3.3% decrease in property taxes compared to 2025. The bulk of these savings is by not spending the $33 million to replace the Corinth Library. My understanding is that the roof leaks, the basement gets water in it, and nothing's been done to fix these problems. In my house, if my roof leaks or my basement gets water, I fix it. I don't tear down the building. So my question is, why hasn't the library been maintained? How much would it cost to repair the roof or fix the foundation? Prove to me why taxpayers should pay $33 million to rebuild this library when it could be updated for a whole lot less money. So I'm asking you all to join me today in demanding proof that the expenses I've outlined in the spreadsheet are absolutely necessary. Instead of approving the 1.9 billion as the budget cap, amend the budget cap to 1.866 billion, and lower the ad valorem property taxes to 354.37 million. And let's work together to save taxpayer dollars. Finally, Commissioner Fast, thank you for arranging the tour of the Corinth Library for me. I really appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, I believe that's all the registered public commenters that we have today. I welcome back Ms. Simms. And again, thank you very much for your efforts on this year's budget. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Ms. Simms. I just want to confirm, because I don't think you went over it in detail, that the, obviously, the 1.9 billion is not completely funded by ad valorem taxes. And according to my calculations, of the 1.9 billion, about 21% comes from the ad valorem, and if you just look at expenditures, it's about 28%. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure people understand, because sometimes I speak with people, and they think that every dime of the county's budget comes from ad valorem taxes. And I try to explain to them that sometimes the, the budget can increase because of other types of revenue, like intergovernmental funding, like grants and, and other things like that, that don't necessarily impact the amount of ad valorem taxes. So I want to just make sure that that's, that's clear to people.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brewer?
Just a couple other clarifying comments and questions. I think it was late May that we started a series of budget hearings that are public meetings. They were four hours at a clip. There was a comment earlier today about lack of transparency. I've got about a six-and-a-half-inch binder of all public documents that were released at each public meeting, in advance of each public meeting, detailing every budget that came before us, from every department and from outside agencies, giving us an understanding of the budgeting process and the budgeting requests. One of the things that I learned, coming aboard as a county commissioner, which candidly was different than how, when I ran different nonprofit organizations in a political subdivision, we did it, and that is that, with the exception of personnel, you do not factor in any cost, any inflationary cost increase as a part of a normal budgeting process. If a department needs more, more dollars for any type of commodities or supplies, printing, postage, so on and so forth, that has to come through as what we call a request for additional resources, and they have to justify why that may look, those, those costs are being asked for. So it's, it's, it's not quite zero budgeting from the sense of starting flat from where you were, and I'm not saying zero budgeting is starting at zero, but starting at a flat budget and then building anything, but it's pretty darn close to us seeing any, any increase. And my understanding of the reason we do that is to fully understand, if we're going to spend more dollars, where are they being spent, and how are they being spent, and really kind of look, taking a, a very conservative approach to looking at one-year budget to the other budget. And then just, just clarification, appraised valuation has, has increased year-over-year. It has started to slow down from where it was in, I think, '23 and '24, when we experienced more double-digit increase. That in effect, if we don't, we have, when we talk about property tax increase, we talk about, are, am I increasing a mill levy, which raises the amount I'm collecting from everyone? But even if I'm keeping a mill levy flat, or decreasing it, as we have seven of the last eight years, by, say, a quarter mill levy, it, it, it doesn't necessarily balance that the, my appraised valuation hasn't outpaced the cut in that budget. And so it's just, we get, we get, the splitting here is a little bit of understanding how that goes forward, but since we're keeping a flat mill levy, but because keeping it flat and appraised valuation still increasing means we're spending even a dollar more than what we spent last year, that's why we have to have the additional hearing, because we're going to exceed the, the revenue-neutral per statute that was passed a few years ago. I'm just getting some clarification for myself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, Ms. Simms, I want to thank you and your staff for the amount of hours and going to hold different public meetings to include the public, so we have more transparency. I want to thank you for hosting one in my district the first time ever, and, you know, I am a little bit competitive, and we had the largest turnout, and then Brewer tried to explain to me that she had a tornado. To me, that's minimal compared to my turnout, but, you know, not only was it just your staff, but it was the entire county. Staff came out to talk about each department and what they were doing to maintain this budget, and I think that says that's significant, and I just can't begin to tell you as a commissioner how much I appreciate that work. You know, the dollars that have, that, you know, in, in some of the presentations I've done in my community, your staff has been generous to come out to help with those and clarifying to people the understanding, and some of the comments I had from a coffee group that went, how much information went into that, and the detailed and like of understanding of what the county is responsible for, the DMV, MEDACT, court systems, jails, and the things that we're providing services for and not receiving the funding that was provided before in the past. So we have a hard decision to make now, not knowing how much more that will be cut, but we still have to provide those services. So I know that not being able to provide more staff at the DMV, I'm going to get phone calls, because I'm going to get those calls about how long it takes to go through the DMV, and, you know, we were committed with this budget to help make that difference. You know, I, and there seems to be, and it's difficult, and, and I, I'm not sure I would have understood it, but COVID relief funds had criteria on them, just like the money that was spent on the parking garage. That was a specific tax that was spent on the courthouse. So that money could not have been spent anywhere else. And so there seems to be just a little bit of misunderstanding, and it is hard to understand, and I learn something new every time I go to those meetings. But again, I just, I can't thank the staff enough for all the hard work to think that we're back in the, what did you say, it was Depression times, or?
Great Recession.
Great Recession, and we have not hired any new staff with the continued growth of our community, and how the lower mill levy in the entire state of Kansas, to me, says a lot. So again, I want to thank you for all the work you've done, and also all the other staff that have come forth, Parks and Rec, Library, and actually holding that staff. I'm not employing anyone else. So I spent time on the library as a liaison for some time, and I do know that they have maintained their buildings and continue to strive for that and get criticism for replenishing and doing that, but sometimes a building gets to a point that you can't continue to keep band-aiding it. So I just, I, I just want to say I thank you.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you, and thanks for those comments, Commissioner Allen Brand. And kind of building on that, I had a couple of comments, and I wanted to give Ms. Simms the opportunity to provide further information on them, if she would like. First of all, we, we know and we have the data that shows that the dependence on residential property tax assessments is, is, has increased phenomenally over the past 20 years, and if you'd been at the public budget hearings, you would have seen that information and seen how, over the years, the, the state has continued to squeeze the county's ability to diversify our revenue sources. And so I think that's, that is something we've discussed up here on the board, something we're, we're trying to look at other options, including the, the renewal of the public safety sales tax, so that we can continue to fund our, our important ambulance services, public safety services, emergency services, without further putting a burden on our residential property taxpayers. The, the second thing I was going to mention, and it goes to what Commissioner Allen Brand said, sometimes I hear people say, well, it's not the, it's not the government's job to provide social services, but it's interesting, if you look at the Constitution of the state of Kansas, which, which we all swore to uphold when we were, when we were sworn in, under Article 7, it specifically, specifically outlines the state and county's responsibility for, quote, "The benefit of mentally or physically incapacitated or handicapped persons, aged and infirm persons, unemployment compensation, old age benefits, and creation of institutions to care for those who are mentally ill, and excuse the term, retarded, visually handicapped, with a handicapping hearing, handicapping hearing loss, tubercular, or for children who are dependent, neglected, or in need of residential institutional care." Remember, this was from about 1859. But we are charged with that care through our state constitution. So I, I think it's important to, to remember that and to, to... So I think it's important to remember that and to consider that we're trying to provide those services while maintaining as efficient and effective a budget, as budget, a budget as possible.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Symes, is the county commission salary increase baked into this budget?
Yes, it is included.
Thank you.
Well, I think my themes on this budget have been pretty consistent. And again, this just being a procedural step, I'll err on the side of brevity here. But just to say, I appreciate that we've talked about the increased cost for services, the services that the people of Johnson County has, have asked us to provide, that they continue to tell us that they are satisfied with and they want us to provide. We're not providing new services this year in this budget. We're just trying to maintain the level of the service that the people in Johnson County tell us that they want. The costs of those have gone up. The inflationary increases are real. I think from a request for additional resources, it was about 18 million for those inflationary increases, and we're not funding the vast majority of those and asking departments to be innovative without any increase in inflation, for inflation or for cost increases, whether that be food, metal, culverts, or otherwise, all of which are up more than 50%. So we appreciate the innovation of the departments to find a way to stick within those budgets. I share the frustration of folks about appraised values and about property taxes and how, as Commissioner Allen Brandon mentioned, the state has taken away other levers that we have to provide the services that are either mandated by the state through the constitution or otherwise, or the services that the people of Johnson County that, again, have told us that they want. And if anybody wants to go with me to Topeka to continue the conversations with the state legislature about how we can take a holistic approach to property, residential property taxes, and also how we fund local governments, I welcome you to do that. We're having those meetings outside of a session, and we'll continue to be there next year, trying to find that comprehensive solution that allows us to be more impactful on the property tax level for the residential owners here in Johnson County. And I appreciate also that part of the services that people want are library services, the master plan that's been in place for a decade, and the planned either reconstruction or new buildings continues on a pathway that is maybe the most valued, or in terms of a percentage of satisfaction, one of the two, Mr. Stewart, most valued and satisfactorily provided services of the people in Johnson County. I appreciate the creative solutions that anybody is willing to bring forward to the table, but I don't think that this one-time planned increase that includes value from the sale of a property, that includes debt, planned debt, and other values is a good reason to otherwise fund ongoing services that, again, the people of Johnson County have asked us to provide. Based on just this one-time reduction, it leaves us a cliff for the next year. We'll continue to look at ways to innovate. And again, this is a procedural step. We can continue to have this discussion over the next few months. And I do look forward to people coming out in August and sharing ideas with us. That is always open. I'm always willing to have that conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
I have a motion when you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I move that the Board authorize the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County government in the amount of $1,904,65,703 for fiscal year 2026, based upon the determinations made by the Board in its work sessions, that the Board notify the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rates for the county, library, and park and recreation taxing districts, and that the Board set the public hearing on the proposed budget for Wednesday, August 20, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the Olathe Conference Center, 10401 South Ridgeview Road, Olathe, Kansas 66061.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Chairman, up until your last couple of statements, I was quite comfortable with the fact that this is a procedural step in the process. It is not a final vote on the budget, which will come in August, and I respect that. But I will share with you, Mr. Chairman, my perspective. When this budget process started, we had a discussion about what our general view and expectation was. We did that in the basement of this building, and it involved staff. And at that time, we were discussing the concerns we had about limited revenue growth and how best to position ourselves for the future. I think it's in fiscal year '27 and '28. In particular, we said that we didn't believe there'd be monies available for any additional RARs, requests for additional resources. I believe that's what it's called. And at that time, I had suggested that we task staff with looking at their budgets and come back with a 1%, 3%, and/or 5% reduction so we could have the ability to consider their priorities and move monies where appropriate. At that time, I believe Commissioner Brewer, at least in part, was interested in some conversation. But, Mr. Chairman, I take some reconsideration of your comment about your willingness to appreciate creative solutions. That was a potential solution to give us more flexibility to focus resources and focus those use. And that then brings us to where we are today. We are, as a commission, and it's not unusual, elected officials are wholly dependent upon staff for the information and the analysis. Now, we can do a little bit on ourselves, but we don't have independent resources to look deeply at that. And without that feedback from staff, and I trust staff and their ability to analyze and give objective, although sometimes hard, feedback in terms of what costs there are and how those resources might be used differently, to discuss it forthright and honestly. And I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, our goal is to find the sweet spot between quality and efficiency. And I'm constantly challenged by that because we do not have that resource available. So, Mr. Chairman, having said that, my vote will reflect that concern, even though I realize that this is a procedural matter.
Fair enough. Seeing no further comments, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Six in favor, one against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Symes. We'll move on to item 13 with the clerk read item 13.
Resolution number 061-25. Consider application number W-25-474-CUP LE for a conditional use permit for continued operation of outdoor storage of trucks and equipment in conjunction with a construction contractor business on property zone RUR, rural district located at 111300 Waverly Road.
Zoe Brown here to present the item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks. Good morning, Zoe Brown Planning. The original CUP for this use at this location was approved in the year 2000 and renewed in 2006 and 2012. The subject property is located at 11300 Waverly Road on 10 acres. Here's an aerial view of the site with the house and accessory building located on the north end of the property. Equipment is stored on the property but taken to job sites each day, so employees aren't really coming and going to the site throughout the day, and there are no changes to the operations from the previous CUPs. Here's the site plan showing the buildings, landscaping, and the fence around the property. Here's a view of the property from Waverly Road. And as you can see from the street, the property is heavily screened with landscaping. Here are a few photos of the outdoor storage on the site. Various materials and equipment are stored on the property, and the property is well-kept and contained in the fenced-in area. The CUP meets the golden criteria. Staff received a few written comments related to the application, and three people spoke at the zoning board meeting, and staff in the West Zoning Board both recommended approval of the CUP with a 10-year term.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Commissioner Allen Brandon?
Thank you, Chair. Well, this is in my district, and it's been there for some time. I have not received any complaints, and I really appreciate the maintained property, the tree line, and the work that they're doing. And so, Ms., so Chair, when you're ready, I have a motion.
Very good. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. I had a question, and maybe I'm asking the wrong question, but is this property considered residential or commercial?
Well, it's, it has RUR zoning, and so in the RUR zoning, a conditional use permit is required to have this use. So it still has the same zoning. They do have their residents on the property, but the zoning is rural.
So how is it taxed?
I do not know.
That's a question for...
Different question.
Okay. Well, I'll have to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Reading through the materials, including the information from the West Zoning Board, and I have no objection to this, but I did have a question on the motion itself, because in the West Zoning Board, it was recommended for a 10-year length for the SUP, and that's not reflected in the motion. And typically, when we have SUPs that have a time length, it's reflected in the motion. I would offer to this body that maybe we need to just simply amend that motion to include the 10-year time length, since that's consistent with what the West Zoning Board was recommending, what the staff was recommending, and what was in the discussion, and I'm assuming the expectations from the West Zoning Board.
Correct. Yes, I think that's a, that's a great amendment.
And it's as reflected in the resolution of the 10-year limit. So Commissioner Allen Brand, when you make the motion, why don't you go ahead and add that?
You know what? I'm going to let Commissioner Brewer do it, since he made that comment.
And I will say, I did see it in the resolution.
So I'll let you read the motion.
I apologize. I will add that in. Okay. I move to adopt resolution number 061-25, approving application number W-25-474-CUP LE, closed parenthesis, for the conditional use permit renewal for a length of 10 years for outdoor storage of trucks and equipment in conjunction with the construction contractor business located at 11300 Waverly Road.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Not seeing further questions or comments. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay. We'll move on then with the clerk read item 14.
Resolution number 062-25. Consider application number E-25-490-ADUPAU for an accessory dwelling unit permit, ADUP, for a 1,600-square-feet accessory dwelling unit located at 5875 West 203rd Terrace.
Zoe Brown, welcome back.
Thank you. Zoe Brown Planning. Yes, this application is requesting approval of a 1,600-square-foot ADU permit to be used as a mother-in-law quarters. The applicant's plan to move into the ADU and allow their children and grandchildren to live in the main house. The subject property is located at 5875 West 203rd Terrace on 3.5 acres. Here's the site plan. Here are the building elevations showing the design of the proposed ADU. And the reason the ADU permit is required is because it exceeds the 900-square-foot maximum for detached units. In staff's opinion, the application meets the golden criteria, and the ADU meets the purpose and intent of the ADU requirements, which is to allow property owners to respond to changing demographic conditions, as well as the needs of their families, while protecting the character of the neighborhood. Staff did receive one call from a neighbor regarding questions and concerns about the application, and planning staff and the East Zoning Board both recommended approval.
Commissioner Allen Brandon?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Ms. Brown, I meant to tell you earlier, I really appreciate your detailed information in your presentation, so you're kind of setting a precedent. So I really do appreciate that. And this is something that I can send my kids and say, maybe you need a mother-in-law week, you know? Maybe my second place to go visit. So, yeah, I actually drove out there, so what a, what a great need to fulfill. So I just wanted to compliment you on the detailed information that you provide with the golden criteria, and so thank you for that.
Thanks.
Commissioner Brewer?
Thank you. These are both in my district. I do not have a problem, this is in my district. I do not have a problem with this. I do have a question related to item number 14 and item number 15. In reviewing the East Zoning Board very detailed minutes, this was even brought up within the East Zoning Board conversation, and there wasn't really a, what I would say, a finite explanation on why. But we're looking at an accessory, an ADU in number four, in Agenda Item 14. And we're looking at it because it's a single-family property, and the ADU exceeds the 900-square-foot, which I hope maybe will be part of that review as we do some of our code review in the unincorporated area. And the next item that's coming up is the same. It's coming before us because it's exceeding that 900 square feet. But the stipulations recommended for this agenda item right now, and the stipulations recommended for the next one, they, they're not consistent.
Right. They're slightly different.
And in the minutes, there was really no definitive explanation why, other than, as often happens, you may have different applications come before, and they may go to different staff. And as those are being reviewed, vetted, and recommendations and guidance provided for the zoning board, they may be articulated slightly differently. And when I read and digested that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, my only recommendation would be maybe when we have similar items, that the different staff people maybe come together, and unless there's a distinct reason for a stipulation to be different on two similar projects, to then have consistency. Because it was part of the East Zoning Board discussion, and I didn't feel like there was a good resolution on how we're going to fix that.
Yeah, so kind of the reason for that is Michelle Leininger had the other case, and they were supposed to go to two different zoning board meetings, and so they weren't reviewed at the same time. Otherwise, they would, they would be consistent. But both are, they both get at the same regulations, and they have to comply. They're just worded a little differently, and...
Right. And I noted that, that the heart of it was still, you know, the owner occupant has to reside in one of them. I mean, there was some very similar stipulations. The biggest difference was around renovation, and one seemed to be a higher burden on one of the applicants than on the other applicant. So I would just, I would just encourage, I don't have a problem moving forward with these items, I'm just saying I would encourage when this occurs, if there's any way that we can kind of align those up, unless there's a distinct reason to have a differently worded stipulation, to make them as consistent as possible.
Yeah, we can definitely do that moving forward.
Yeah, just because there was also in that broader conversation, a little bit of discussion broadly in that community around ADUs within a single-family area and precedent, and how to, how to have that consistent messaging going forward. So other people who may be contemplating this kind of know what the playbook looks like.
Right, totally.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any further questions.
Happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
All righty. I motion to move to adopt Resolution Number 062-25, approving application number E25-490ADUP. P开着, A U, close parentheses, for the accessory dwelling unit permit for a 1,600-square-foot ADU accessory dwelling unit located at 5875 West 203rd Terrace.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Not seeing further questions. Would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Let's do item number 15, then we'll take a brief break. The clerk read item 15, please.
Application number E25-485-ADUP. Consider a request from Stillwell Living LLC applicant on behalf of Scott and Vicky Rogers, landowners, for an accessory dwelling unit permit for 1,020-square-foot accessory dwelling unit located at 19501 Lowell Avenue on 4.7 acres and zoned RUR Rural District.
Michelle Leiniger's here on this one. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning, Michelle Leiniger, County Planning Staff. As stated, this is an application for an accessory dwelling unit permit, very similar to the previous application. As you can see on the screen, on the vicinity map, the subject property is located just east of Highway 69, between 191st Street and 199th Street on Lowell Avenue. Here is the picture of the existing house that's on the site, and then the site plan, which shows the proposed location of the garage with the ADU above it. The regulations allow for a maximum of 900 square foot of livable area for an ADU, and if that is exceeded, then an ADU permit process, which is what we're going through today, is required. And so the applicant is requesting a 1,020-square-foot of livable area for the ADU on the second floor. So here is just a elevation of the proposed garage. The west elevation is what you will see on the west side. The north elevation is what you will see above the house. The house is single-story. This garage is two-story. The applicant has worked to mimic the roofline so that the building behind it is less noticeable. At the June 4th East Zoning Board meeting, the board recommended approval of the application as recommended by staff. No members of the public spoke on this item, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciated reading the transcript of a lengthy explanation of ADUs by the zoning board. So thank you for your help in coordinating their understanding. Commissioner Brewer.
I'm happy to make the motion. Only other additional comment I would make is I appreciate, too, both the East Zoning Board and the staff, as we consider ADUs, having the robust conversation around subject capacity. I think that's an important element to be mindful of. So I'm ready to make the motion when you are, Chair.
Please go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 063-25, which approves an accessory dwelling unit permit for a 1,020-square-foot accessory dwelling unit located at 19501 Lowell Avenue for the reasons and subject to the stipulation set forth within the resolution.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. A question from Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, not to open up a can of worms, but just a question. Is there any way that we could consider... I would look at... I look at this as being fairly routine, straightforward, but to provide a mechanism that it could be handled administratively, so it does not have to come to the commission? Or is there some legal absolute that has to bring it before the commission?
Great question. Michelle Leiniger is itching to provide an answer.
I am itching to answer this.
I know she likes to be here, so maybe that's a bad question.
So we have criteria in our zoning regulations, and if you meet those criteria, we do have an administrative certificate process. If you do not meet that criteria, or want to, say, be a little bit bigger, then this is the process that we have developed in order to notify the public that you're doing... that you're liking to do something more than what the code allows. And so it's that balance mechanism between what's allowed by right and what's allowed by public process, so that you can get public comment from the neighbors, had there be.
Go ahead. You can follow up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I respect that and appreciate that, and I think that makes a lot of sense. But I just wonder, Mr. Chairman, if there... And I do not know your profession or your art, but when you say "a little bit bigger, a little different," that we can't build in some level of flexibility, tolerance, as it were, on circumstances like this? And I know it's much easier if you have it in black and white, the law, but these items, they're good, they're important, they're necessary, but, I mean, staff can do this.
Mr. Leipzig, do you want to address it?
No. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Jay Leipzig, the planning director. I appreciate the comments. And as you know, over time, these regulations have changed a little bit incrementally every year. That is one of the major considerations as we go through our new subdivision regulations is, you know, they were very, very restrictive a few years ago, and we're starting to loosen that up. So to that point, yes, that's kind of the long-term goal, is to look at whatever flexibility we can build into this, so these items don't have to come before you that are fairly routine like this, that you see that, obviously, yes, staff can review them, but there were parameters set for when something would go before the board for review. So we are aware of that, too, and we're looking at those things.
Thank you. Sorry to raise the question, but just... I appreciate it. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. And so, serving on two previous city planning commissions and the American Planning Association, you know, this is also full transparency, and we talk about that within our board. And, you know, I, just because of serving on those boards, you know, one of the things that I was... took an oath to when I served on those boards is that I totally respect the staff and what they bring forth, because you have education and training to provide that service. And even though I really, really appreciate the zoning boards and their volunteer work, I still will always lean towards staff recommendations and how they present things. So I feel like this is another opportunity for the community to come forth, but I do know that there are some ways administratively we can do that, so I really appreciate it. So that's just my feelings. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Commissioner Brewer.
And probably only one other reflection is if we think about it, once again, in Agenda Item 14, I noted in both these cases, they exceed the policy of 900 square feet. And the policy, as Mr. Leipzig shared with us, is under review. It's the very act, Commissioner Ashcraft, from my perspective, of when these things come forward to us, and we hear reflections such as the one you shared, that allows us as policymakers, that as policy recommendation changes are being suggested, we have a little bit more in-the-weeds feel for why this policy needs to be changed or why it needs to be. So sometimes it's our... It's us feeling the clunkiness up at the dais, or feeling like this is something that could be modified, streamlined. That helps us be informed when that recommendation for modification or streamlining comes before us, to know how we want to weigh in on it. So yes, it takes our time, but I think it's part... an important part of the process. Thank you.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Chair. And as I've been told several times on this dais, we need to allow for public input for the Board of County Commissioners to hear, and this is the avenue to allow that to happen.
Very good. Motion from anyone?
I've made the motion, I believe.
Have we made...
Have I?
Okay. Very good. Motion's been made and seconded. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
Yes, it is.
All right. Very good. This item's approved. We're gonna take a brief break. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you all very much for your patience. Thank you all very much for your patience. Thank you. Well, they keep saying we want to do it at this time. But... Thank you Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes. I don't-
With the clerk.
Nah. Thank you all very much. Absent objection from my colleagues, we're gonna take some items out of order just for the guests that have joined us here today. And so if there's not an objection, I'd like to take up number 18 next.
Okay, let's take up item 18. Would the clerk read item 18, please?
Resolution number 064-25. Application number E25-484-REZAU. Consider a request from Harold Phelps, Phelps Engineering applicant, and Daryl and Susan Dugan, landowners, for rezoning from the RUR Rural Zoning District to the PRU-1B Planned Residential Urban Single Family 1B zoning district on 1.49 acres on property located at 19750 Foster Street.
Diane Wicklund is here to present this item. Welcome back.
Thank you, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. Thank you for the adjustment in the agenda. And so the subject property is located on Foster Street in Stillwell, just north of 199th Street. The application and applicant is requesting to rezone the 1.49 acre parcel from the rural zoning district to the PRU 1B residential district. And the purpose of the rezoning is for the landowner to construct one new single-family residential home on the property. And the application does include a request from the applicant for a waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirement for residential zoning districts to not construct Foster Street, which is a local street, to a type B collector street standard, and instead to allow it to remain as constructed. Also to note that there were no members of the public that spoke at the zoning board meeting for this application. Both planning staff and the zoning board are recommending approval, and the zoning board recommendation was unanimous, recommending approval of the rezoning and that waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirement. I do have graphics available to show if the board would like to see those. Otherwise, I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wicklund. Questions or comments on this item? I'm not seeing questions or comments at this time. Commissioner Brewer?
I'll make a motion, one ready, and I'll just say that I, once again, had a chance to review the zoning board materials and also during the break, I had a few very minor questions, and I was able to discuss those with the applicant. So I'm good with moving forward with the motion when you're ready.
Why don't you go ahead?
Move to adopt resolution number 064-25, which approves a rezoning from RUR Rural Zoning District to the PRU-1B Planned Residential Urban Single Family 1B zoning district on 1.49 acres, which includes a waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirement to not construct Foster Street to a type B collector street standard, and instead to allow it to remain as constructed for the reasons set forth within the resolution.
Allen Brand second.
So moved by Commissioner Brewer and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Not seeing further questions. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Wicklund. Would the clerk read item 19?
Resolution number 065-25. Consider City of Olathe application number RZ25-0002 for a rezoning from the CTY AG County Agricultural District to the AG City Agricultural District, and a preliminary site development plan for the Olathe Range Development, which is a City of Olathe Police Department Public Safety Training Facility on 95.6 acres, generally located on the property at the northwest corner of 167th Street and I-35 Highway, Olathe, Kansas, and located within one mile of the New Century Air Center.
Thank you very much, Diane Wicklund. Thank you for your presentation here.
Yes, thank you. Again, the subject property is located at 167th Street and I-35 Highway, as you can see on the vicinity map. This is a City of Olathe application, which is located within one mile of the New Century Air Center, and, which is why the application is before you for review of airport compatibility. The application is for a request from that County Agricultural District to the City Agricultural Zoning District, and a preliminary development plan for this Olathe Range Development, which is a City of Olathe Police Department Public Safety Training Facility. It's on 95 acres. The subject property is located within that Safety Zone 6, the airport influence area, and with a maximum of 50 to 60 people anticipated on-site per day. It is less than that maximum intensity allowed for that non-residential development in Zone 6, and does comply with that criteria matrix for the safety zones. Also to note that there were no members of the public that spoke at the Airport Commission meeting for this application. Both planning staff and the Airport Commission are recommending approval of the rezoning and the preliminary development plan. Again, I do have graphics available to show the board if you want to look at those. Otherwise, I am available for questions, and the applicant is also present.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you Chair. Well, this is in my district, and also has gone through the airport and FAA, and it meets all the criteria. So when you're ready Chair, I have a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wicklund, will this be for the exclusive use of the Olathe Police Department, or will other agencies and/or individuals have access?
My understanding is it's just for the Olathe Police Department, and it would not be open to the, to the general public.
Well, but, but other law enforcement agencies would not have access?
I do not know the answer to that question. I don't know if the applicant maybe knows the answer to that question.
It'll be owned by the City of Olathe, operated by the Olathe Police Department, but they will have FBI, Johnson County Sheriff, Kansas Highway Patrol surrounding cities will also be able to use it, but it's primarily going to be for the Olathe Police Department.
And could you identify yourself?
I'm Keith Sperr. I'm a civil engineer with Trainer Architects. I'm a civil engineer on the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand?
I do want to share that I did talk to the Olathe Police Chief, and they do, they do have great relationships, so there are, there is sharing going on. So if you're ready Chair, I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt resolution number 065-25 approving of rezoning and preliminary site development plan for Olathe Range Development located within one mile of New Century, with New Century Air Center for the reasons and subject to speculations as recommended by the Airport Commission.
Myers second.
So moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, and then seconded by Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Wicklund. We will circle back now to item number 16. If the clerk would read item 16.
Resolution number 074-25. Consider adopting resolution number 074-25, recognizing and organizing Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number 1.
Jim Francis is here, back with us for this item. Welcome back.
Good morning, Jim Francis, Fire Services Administration. So this resolution is needed to ensure that the new fire district, Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number 1, is sufficiently prepared and organized to operate on January 1st. There are some matters that this board will be required to do between now and January 1st, primarily for taxation and budgetary approval reasons. That's the reason, primary reason for this resolution. It also cleans up three clerical errors, or minor errors, that were made to the 23-page legal description and the map that were created for the February 6th meeting and resolution that created the districts. So I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Chief Francis, I want to thank you for all your work. I want to thank Chief Morley, and I want to thank both of you for all the work that you've done on this. And it is good to see the relationship building within the cities. And so far, I've been hearing nothing but good things, the consolidation of the budget. And I know that it's been a lot, a lot of meetings, working together, and the cities have really appreciated their input, and they also look forward to being on that advisory board. So thank you for all your work. Chair, I have a motion when you're ready.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brewer?
Just one, thank you. I'll echo my fellow commissioners' thanks to the heavy lift over time in the consolidation of Fire District 2 and Fire District 1. And as we know, Fire District 2 is already kind of under the similar type of umbrella that we're moving Fire District 1 to. I do have one question, and that is kind of the timing on when we think that advisory council, are we looking at starting to identify and recruit towards the end of 2025 or the beginning of 2026? Since I have to help identify people, I want to make sure I know the timeline.
Previous discussions I've had with council is that that process would probably start in late fall with an effective date of 1-1 of '26.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 074-25, rezoning and organizing Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number 1.
Just a friendly amendment that it be recognizing and organizing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Seconded by myself, moved by Commissioner Allen Brand. A question from Commissioner Ashcraft?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to offer to Mr. Francis, congratulations on a job well done, a road that had some twists and turns and bumps, but you navigated it adroitly, and I respect you for that.
Thank you. And thank you very much to the fire professionals who have joined us here today. We appreciate you. Without further ado, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Thank you. I mean, aye.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Thank you for calling me.
No problem. Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Would you read item 17, please?
Consider increasing the contract authority of Johnson County's contract per request for proposal, RFP 2023-078 with Tool Design Group LLC by $203,823 for additional costs associated with the development of Johnson County Transit Strategic Plan utilizing $163,058 of federal Section 5307 formula funds and a local match of $40,765, excuse me, for a revised contract amount not to exceed $576,960 with a contract term extension through August 31st, 2025.
Thank you very much. Josh Powers here before us to discuss this request. Welcome back, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. Josh Powers with Transit. So when we bid the strategic plan, RFP, that was in April of 2023, and then over the course of the, you know, conducting the business of the strategic plan, we recognized that there were certain activities that had not been captured in the scope. Really what that amounted to was the amount of outreach and the amount of stakeholder engagement, particularly with our cities, with our mayors, and with our city managers. And so as the strategic plan was continued to be, you know, stood up, we added 13 extra meetings, and our folks that from Tool Design are not local, so they are traveling in to come and do these meetings. That's a mix of in-person and virtual. And so that really represents the bulk of the increase there. Again, this is not additional monies, just contract authority. And there is a small piece of the additional authority that is yet to be, will pay for additional implementation of the strategic plan once it comes to the board. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Commissioner Hanslick, go ahead.
I am glad to make the motion.
Okay, let's see about questions. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powers, I need some clarification, because just a plain reading of this, the total seems to go from 373,000 and change to five, nearly 577,000. So that's, if my math is right, that's almost a 55% increase. And I will tell you, and I think I told you this previously, I did appreciate the work of the consultant. They did a yeoman's work, and I'm not concerned about their efforts, but I think what I'm struggling with is the timing. I mean, under whose authority was this additional work done? Did the board acknowledge and prescribe this, or was this under your authority or the manager's authority? Help me understand what that decision point was.
Well, I think it would come from me as staff reporting upward to the manager's office and assistant manager auto, and those decisions were made. You know, we were trying to meet a deadline that we did not meet, and the reason we didn't meet that deadline was this engagement effort that was necessary.
So why is this, at this point, being brought to the commission and not an earlier acknowledgement or assertion that it would be affecting the overall cost of the project by some amount, either estimated or identified?
I think there's two components to that. The first is there would be additional costs with delaying the completion of the strategic plan, you know, as that process goes on. And then obviously, we have to be able to quantify what that engagement effort is going to be in order to cost it out. And so until we incurred those activities, it was difficult to put a specific number to it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You can.
But what if there had been a decision point that the commission was satisfied with the work as it had stood rather than prescribing or supporting a 50% increase?
Certainly, I respect and understand that criticism. I think we were moving as quickly as we could to make sure that all of the stakeholders, including the board of county commissioners, but also of all the cities, were, you know, fully appraised of what was going to be coming out of strategic plan. So it's a valid point, and I apologize that we were not able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. And Commissioner Myers and I were both members of that steering group and were aware of the need for some additional meetings. As Mr. Powers said, until they were finished, it wasn't clear what those, the scope would be, because I think as the process went along, it became evident that there needed to be some more engagement, especially with the cities. And so I think that is why, part of why this has come to this point of needing some additional funding, which personally, I think is well worth it to make sure that we had extensive input and extensive engagement with everyone that needed to be part of those conversations.
Does the county manager want to address this at all?
Josh answered it, but I would just say, we should have brought it sooner, so we will do a better job. The intent was correct, to get more outreach. You guys have given us direction. You want more engagement with the community. Staff is absolutely following up on that, but process-wise, on this request, should have come sooner, and we are here now. And we'll do better.
Commissioner Brewer, did you ever hand out?
I did, but that answered my question. I mean, typically, if you have a change of contract, you try to seek the approval before you spend the time, because we're kind of backing into a decision as to forward.
Did you use your microphone, please? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. My only question was, since I didn't know because the local match was the 40,000, that if this decision matrix was permissible because of the increase being within a discretionary decision. So I didn't know if I was missing something from a technical standpoint, but you answered my question that in the future, it'll be asked permission before incurring the additional cost type of.
As soon as we can. We don't always know all the costs, but at least a heads-up that estimates or something like that. Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, county manager, I appreciate that, and sometimes things just get away, and you're here now and trying to be on top. But it does give me, knowing that two other commissioners were a part of this, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Hanslick have at that motion?
Thank you. I move to authorize increasing the contract authority of Johnson County's contract per RFP 2023-078 with Tool Design Group LLC by $203,823 for additional costs associated with the development of Johnson County Transit Strategic Plan, $163,058 of federal Section 5307 formula funds, and a local match of $40,765 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $576,960 with a contract term extension through August 31st, 2025.
Myers, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, I, as a principal, don't like change orders. I've seen this with road construction, stormwater. When I was on city council, I railed about this a lot. What I see often contractors do, they do bids low, and then, so they get the bid, and then they do a change order and then bring forth all these additional prices. So, I mean, I will support this, but, I mean, we could have gotten probably some other contracts for contractors for a lot less. And, you know, it's an incredible amount of money for this contract, and we had other bids, right, that were lower than theirs, and they're now above all the bids that we had with that, with this change order.
I just want to clarify, Commissioner, Tool was not selected on the basis of lowest bid, right? They were not the lowest bid, and these change orders did not come from them. They came from us.
So then...
We expanded the scope, I think is what Josh is saying, because we wanted to do more outreach as we started in the process. I think there was a recognition and acknowledgement that it deserved more with the cities in particular, but other outreach. And so that's at the point where we should have disclosed, as we're doing more outreach, this will increase their scope and estimated, at least put you on notice that there might be additional.
Okay, well, then I understand. I didn't understand all of that, so thank you for clarifying. I apologize.
No problem. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Fast, I understand that at first glance, it kind of does smack of change orders, but I understand that it was initiated by staff and that two commissioners were present, and I respect the work that was done. I'm not questioning that the additional meetings were or were not. I mean, the product itself was, it's a good foundational product, and I appreciate that work. My hesitancy is, you know, if this had been a wastewater contract, that then after the fact, the monies had been expensed and the project done, and there was a 50% increase and the commission had been notified, that would give me great pause. And I look at this and see that as a breakdown, although I respect and I appreciate both staff and the manager acknowledging that, my vote will reflect that concern.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll on the pending motion.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, no.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have five in favor, two against. Is that consistent with your count?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Powers. All right. I believe that's all the action items for today. Still more to go. Don't get too excited, sir. At this time, we'll move to the county manager for a management report.
Chairman, thank you. Chairman and commissioners, we have several items this morning and a few things that we do want to celebrate and some heads-up on some planning efforts. So first, we'd like, we've got some staff here to talk, to celebrate the Johnson County Fourth Annual Juneteenth Celebration. It was another successful event. Many of you were there. Appreciate all of your support to make it happen and leading up to it and since. We had 600 attendees, which is the most we've had for this annual event. We do have members of staff on the planning committee here today. Can you please stand to be recognized for your efforts? So a special thank you to Chairman Kelly for addressing and doing a welcome, and there's just so many outstanding efforts there. We had 14 departments represented, so I know many of you stopped and talked to them, and it's amazing to see the community members, and they have fun things to give away or interact and play games. And so it was just a really uplifting, yet serious event to think about the history and the importance and the impact of bringing recognition, but also, you know, celebrating efforts that have been made. And so I don't know if anybody from the planning committee wants to say anything. If not, we do have pictures, and we do appreciate your efforts. So I'll look to see if any, I didn't really prep them, but I appreciate you guys being here. You're welcome to, but you don't have to.
I'll just say thank you. I think it was a wonderful event. The event continues to grow, and we are the beneficiaries of the residual impacts from the event, not only celebrating and recognizing, but the 600 people there being able to interact with the 14 departments. I think that's huge, too. So thank you very much. We'll continue to reap the benefits and look forward to another good celebration and more people there next year. Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment and pile on a little bit, and I thank the county manager and staff. The presentation by all the departments, the callers, the organization, the gifty handouts, bringing people in, also HR having a recruiting booth, I mean, it had a great vibe, and I hope that that kind of format...
Vibe, sorry. Voices of inclusion, belonging, and equity.
I hope that continues going forward. I know it's work. I know it was hot, but it's a worthwhile event, so thank you for volunteering. I hope you're volunteered and not...
Me, too.
Yeah. But good work, so thank you.
Very good. Continued report?
Yes, thanks again for your efforts. I think the planning, all the planning that goes on behind the scenes, you guys don't see all the hours, but you see the results. And I am also proud that watching the inner... And I am also proud that watching the interaction of the 14 departments, I think they understood the deep meaning behind it, but also made it interactive and gave, you know, education about what we do as a county. So thanks again, team, for being here also. Next, we have Bo McCall and he's our World Cup Special Project Manager. He's going to come forward and give you an update. We are less than one year away from the first World Cup match in Kansas City. And as you know, we've had several events lately to celebrate that. And Bo has a quick update on our efforts for the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Bo McCall, County Manager's Office. See if I can turn this slide here. There we go. As someone who grew up in Johnson County, who spent a lot of my professional career working in Johnson County and around the Kansas City metro, somebody who's raising a family here in Johnson County, I am really excited to share that in less than a year, we have the biggest event in the world coming to Johnson County. 349 days, the first match of the FIFA World Cup will be played in Mexico City. A few days later, it's going to be played here in Kansas City. So what an amazing opportunity to welcome visitors from across the world, amazing opportunity to provide an unforgettable experience, once in a lifetime experience and a lot of economic impact for our own residents. And so very excited for all the people that will be coming to Johnson County and Kansas City to stay, play, celebrate and explore. I'm going to be going through some slides and updates as far as KC 2026, as well as what's going on as far as the planning in Johnson County. Some of these slides may be familiar, but I think they're important to keep front of mind as we go into planning efforts and talk about the World Cup. We do have six matches coming to Kansas City. Four of those are going to be group stage and then we have a round of 32 and a quarter final. When you look at the number of teams that will most likely be in that team draw during the group stage, we're probably going to have about seven teams. From there, when we look into the group, round of 32 and the quarter final, we'll have approximately another one, two, four more teams that could join us there. So definitely we'll have another team in the quarter final, or sorry, in the round of 32, that group K. But when you look at that, just the teams that will be visiting the metro, we're looking at 11, potentially 11, you know, minimum of eight out of 48. That's 20 to 25% of the teams in the World Cup will be making a stop here in the metro. So very exciting to see that. The match duration in Kansas City will be 26 days. The full match duration will be 39 days. To put that into perspective, in Qatar in 2022 with the, this is an expanded tournament this year, there was 29 days of, of World Cup in Qatar. So we're going to be almost matching that here. We've had a few one-year-to-go celebration events in the past couple of weeks. It's been exciting to see those. Just wanted to share a few of those highlights. This one was from Union Station a couple of weeks ago for the Kansas City Countdown. Chairman Kelly spoke at that along with KC 2026 and some of the FIFA sponsors. You can see in that backdrop on the left, the World Cup poster, the official poster for Kansas City, and also the first countdown clock reveal. On Sunday, we had the Aspiria Campus KC Kickoff Experience. Again, really exciting to see this in Johnson County and in Overland Park. On the left there, you can see one of our shuttle, airport shuttle buses that was out at the event. They had a pep rally. The Parina Dog Champion Team was there. I unfortunately did not make it. I actually was on a little bit of a retreat, I guess, a field of research down in Atlanta for the FIFA Club World Cup, doing some, some research there. Got a couple of matches. It was very exciting to see the first match ever where an MLS team beat a European team in official competition Thursday with Inter Miami in Porto. So exciting to see that, but I heard everybody that was there had a great time. And then finally, on this previous Monday, we had another media event at Shields Soccer Complex in Overland Park. Mayor Skoo, Chairman Kelly spoke at those, or that event. We also had a countdown clock reveal, the second one in the metro. That's going to be permanently at the Shields Soccer Complex. So again, really exciting to see that here in Johnson County. As a father with a couple of young ladies who are budding soccer players, it's also really exciting to see that this is going to be at a youth soccer complex, too. When we talk about the number of visitors, 650,000 is what's anticipated. Now, that could change based on what base camps we get, what team draws we have. But when you put that into perspective, as far as the host cities, Kansas City is the smallest host city of, by population of the US host cities. If you were to put the Canadian and also Mexican host cities in there, we would still be the smallest. So it's, when you put that into perspective with that 650,000, if that 650,000 was all here for the entire 26 days, we're looking at a 28% population growth in, in the metro, which is exciting and also requires a lot of planning. And that's why you're hearing a lot about the efforts this far out and why planning efforts have been going on a year and a half, two, three years from now, or previous to now. And so one thing we do hear from KC 2026 quite a bit is that FIFA has reached out and said that KC, the metro, is ahead of the game here when it comes to transportation planning, safety and security, community events. So really exciting to hear that. Something else I wanted to share was that Kansas City was recently named the sixth best soccer business, or yeah, sixth best sports business city for soccer in the country, ahead of a lot of these other metros that are higher than us. And so we're going to be ready. We're, a lot of energy going into this event. When we look at the US travel profile, a couple of these statistics stand out to me. So 54% international visitors, 41% of international visitors will speak English. Again, there's a lot of changes that potentially could come through based on what teams we draw, but it goes to show a lot of the planning efforts being made around language services when it comes to also business, local businesses, some of the considerations they're going to have. Another statistic that stands out to me is that average international visitor stay in the US of 9.7 days. And so when you think about that, whether somebody's staying in North Kansas City or Lee Summit or Lawrence or Johnson County, they're going to want to get out and explore during those two weeks that they're here. And so again, just another way to promote what we're doing here in the county, the services, the recreation, the fun events we're going to have. There's a lot of talk about the international visitors, but when you look at Kansas City on this map on the left here with the other host cities, you can see there's a cluster of host cities on the East Coast, the West Coast, Southern United States. There's not a lot in that middle geographic area. And so I anticipate, there's 40 million people that live within a day's drive of Kansas City, about a 600 mile, considering a 600 mile drive, a day's drive. And so would not be surprised at all, we see a lot of folks coming and visiting from around the Great Plains, the Midwest. There's a lot of MLS teams that are in that, that map area as well. And so would anticipate to see a large number of travelers from there. This is a slide on the regional economic impact. Heard this number, 653 million when it comes to Kansas. 163 million is what we, is the anticipated economic impact there as well. Of the 55,000 hotel rooms that were a part of the bid for the World Cup, about 33% of those are in the state of Kansas and half of those are in Johnson County. Wanted to share a couple of resources that KC 2026 has been promoting recently. So for small businesses, if you're interested in being potentially a subcontractor for FIFA, so FIFA is hiring subcontractors around the country, looking for local engagements. They have a business interest form that's on KC 2026's webpage. They're posting procurement opportunities. They're coordinating with the Department of Commerce in Kansas, Kansas Office of Small Business Development. Any day now, I'm hearing there's going to be a small business readiness and preparation guide that will be released, too, for local businesses around the metro as far as how to better leverage and engage those economic opportunities. And then also just some of those considerations and logistics around the games. FIFA's also, has put out a volunteer online sign up. So essentially, the, if you, if you're interested in volunteering, they're going to need 8,000, 8,000 to 9,000 volunteers for these games. You can go out to KC 2026 website, sign up, get news updates on that. The portal is, last I heard, will open in August or September. They're going to be looking for nine, eight-hour shifts during that time. It's going to be over the age of 18 to volunteer. Essentially, there's going to be a interview, background checks. You can put the availability, what your skill levels are, your interests, and then they will select volunteers going into January, February, March and April. Also, wanted to share what we're doing here in the county. So I've been in this role for close to two months now. I've gotten to meet with a lot of departments, a lot of the subcommittees. I've met with all the subcommittees. Earlier this week, we had our second full committee meeting where there was report outs from the subcommittees as far as the planning that they're doing. It's so exciting and encouraging to hear all the problem solving, ideas, collaboration, the planning that's going on around this event. This is going to last a lot longer. The partnerships that we're making here are going to last a lot longer than the final game in a year. We're also working closely with the metro community, metro local governments, Mid-America Regional Council, KC 2026. So a lot of different conversations and planning going on there. One more initiative I'm really excited to share is the Johnson County United Initiative. This was rolled out last weekend at the Aspiria Campus for the KC Kickoff and also this, earlier this week for the Countdown Clock Reveal at Shields. Essentially, this is a initiative to promote and brand Johnson County going forward as far as events that will be happening in the county. This is something that local cities can use to promote their events as well, transportation, wayfinding, some of those unofficial events that might be happening around Johnson County during that time. Want to give a big shout out to Jody Hanson, the communications team, for all the work they did getting this across the finish line during that time. Last week, they worked, I know Jody worked closely with communications directors, PIOs from around the metro to make sure this was getting launched. And so Johnson County United is where you can learn more. We're going to have more updates there soon. There's not a lot there quite yet, but as we get more events onto the calendar, those will be there. And also want to let you know that the metro cities and counties are working with Mid-America Regional Council to post events as far as their planning and coordination. Those are on, there's a, Mark has an event coordination calendar essentially. So we're starting to see a lot of events go into that. It provides awareness for the cities and counties to create their own events and plan around those. And so we should eventually see that become more public, but right now that's a useful resource. And also want to give a shout out to our new communications director, Lisa. Very excited to collaborate with her over the next year on World Cup. And finally, as far as some of those key details that are still to be determined, so the group stage teams, we're looking at seven, seven teams. It potentially could be eight, but most likely will be seven when we do the draw in December. That will, there's a lot of considerations there around language needs, cultural customs, the traveler volume that will be seen. Again, that'll be early December for that timeline. Base camps, we're still waiting to hear what the, if we will be getting a base camp. We could get up to three in the metro. So those selections are still to be determined. We're looking at January as far as that potential timeline. We heard recently, unfortunately, it doesn't sound like Overland Park, Sheridan will be the, as a consideration as a base camp anymore and so, but we'll still have three locations in the metro. As far as the metro transit, there's a lot of planning happening right now. One thing we can say for sure is we have funded a airport route from MCI to Lenox City Center and the Overland Park, Sheridan and Convention Center. I know Josh and the transit team are working closely with KC ATA, KC 2026 on different circulator routes, potentially for the county, also potential route out to FIFA Fan Fest or Liberty Memorial. And so we should know more soon with those. A lot of just planning considerations around sustainable funding for those, those efforts. We also are waiting to hear about the licensing for community events. So FIFA should be releasing guidelines soon about official versus unofficial events. I know a lot of local businesses, local governments, it's going to impact their planning. We should have a better understanding of the licensing cost and guidelines there. And then finally, the federal funding for host cities is the last unknown. If there will be any federal funding available for public safety, public transportation, I would say right now, our, the, the best bet is there is a $625 million Homeland Security Grant that's been passed through the House and is currently being reviewed by the Senate as far as reconciliation. We should know within the next couple of weeks if that's going to go through, if the Senate's going to approve that. But at that time, there's still going to be a lot of unknowns as far as when we might be eligible for that money, that funding, what it could be used for, when it would be delivered. And so still waiting on host cities, are waiting on that federal funding piece to understand just how much we could be eligible for. And so with that, there's a lot to go, a lot, lot, you know, under a year as far as the planning, but we, we've got a great start. Really excited for this. It's going to be a successful event. I'm president in Johnson County, Kansas City Metro, and with that, I'll just open it up for questions.
Bo, thank you very much for the presentation and thanks for all the work that you've done in a short period of time. I think the work that Johnson County's done to be proactive helps us be the most prepared, I think, in the metro region. And with the metro region planning, we are one of, if not the most prepared in the nation. And I don't say that with hyperbole. We've heard that directly from FIFA. So I want to express my gratitude to you, to the team at KC 2026 and the others in the metro region for the coordination. I know there's still a lot of things that we don't know yet, but in terms of how prepared we can be, given what we do know, I think we are in a very good spot. So thank you for the robust presentation. Are there any questions for Bo? Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Bo, and I should be calling you by your last, you are perfect for this job. So I'm not sure how this came about, but your enthusiasm, professionalism, just working with others is definitely showing. So thank you for that. I also want to say, I've been telling people that they, about the Shields clock.
Yes.
To go over and have your pictures taken. I was talking to somebody in charge of the three-in-one fields and this morning, and they're going to be taking their teams over to have their picture there. I also want to thank the Chair for his work, bringing everybody together. I know that, I know you don't have a lot of things to do, so you know, to spend that time and work with others. I also want to thank the mayor. I was able to go to that kickoff event. And I'm not really sure with all the goats and the llamas, I really didn't know that they played soccer. So that was interesting, but I thought it was very well done. And I am just going to go on notice that my dog setter has already signed up as a volunteer. She does all those events, so she's already been vetted, but it could, it could mess up with my attendance. So anyway, but thank you for all the work you've done and also thank you to the Chair.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so what is, what's this OP gets, the Sheridan gets dropped? What's that about?
I, so I honestly don't have a lot of visibility into FIFA's decision about that. The, my, my understanding is based off of just news articles that I read was that it was too large. That was the determination was that the Sheridan Convention Center was too big.
So that's a FIFA determination?
Yep.
We don't make that determination and it's a determination that FIFA has and it's infinite.
That might be in New York City. I mean.
It's, for the base camp, and this is me speculating, so forgive that. When teams choose a base camp location for their team specifically, they want a location that is at least semi-private.
Oyster.
Yeah.
Allow the team to focus on potentially, potentially winning the World Cup. So that's not to say that the Sheridan Overland Park is not going to be robustly utilized by fanbases and by others to come support teams, but it won't be the hotel potentially hosting one of the teams itself.
And Mr. Chairman, so Bo, if you have any influence on the United logo, Johnson County, get the sunflower put in there.
I like the logo as it is.
Nice thing about the logo, too, is that Jody working with the different cities. The idea is that it can be customized for the cities. So if they want to customize it, put it on a scarf, you know, make it their own, they can do that. Play with the colors a little bit, put a sunflower on, so look into that.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. McCall.
Thank you.
So Mr. McCall is, as a reminder, thank you. He's just jumped right in and got going with it and he's a soccer fan himself and just went, came back from a trip. So ask him for some pictures or videos. It's pretty fun to see. But as a reminder, Bo actually has been on our innovations team and we pulled him for 18-month special assignment for this. He was nominated along with others that were nominated. It was an extremely interesting process. We had great leaders step up and those great leaders that came forward were also finding opportunities for them since then as well. And Julie Karins and I both interviewed those. And Julie Karins and I both interviewed those finalists, so it was a great process to look at those leaders internally. So, Bo, thank you for taking that on. I also want to recognize other key players with the World Cup, and that's Julie Karins, who's the CMO sponsor, Erin Nguyen, who's been really active in that and still active in there, Dan Robison. And then, if I start from there, there's a whole long list of people because it does truly take all various departments. And if you saw the meeting that we had this week where Mr. McCall was leading it, you would have been proud to see all of our, all of our departments, not only taking seriously all the issues, but also being creative and fun and finding ways to highlight what the county brings to the region. So, it's been a great undertaking so far, and we've got a long ways to go. So, thank you, Bo, for the report today. Bo mentioned this, but I should have done it earlier. Lisa Thurber is here today, our communications director. She started this week, welcome. I did take her around to meet each one of you, and I think she, her first day was the, one of the World Cup events, and so she met a few of you there also, but she does plan to meet with you each soon. And then, also, they've moved their, their offices down on the second floor, and Commissioner this morning had a great idea of maybe open house welcome sometime soon, so you can see once they get some things set up with HR. But Lisa has worked for the city of Fayetteville, so she comes with some great local government experience, also worked for Mizzou and in the President's Office and working with executives there. So, Lisa, welcome. I'm not sure if you want to say anything or if you just want to, okay, well, welcome aboard, we're glad to have you and we all have been.
You say she worked for KU?
Mizzou.
Oh.
We like, we have a nice rivalry between our, our schools here. Next item is the NACO Achievement Award, so they just were announced in the last few days, and several of you are going to represent us at NACO in the coming week and a half, so appreciate you guys going there. But I do want to highlight, I'll go fairly quickly what the awards are, and then, once they get the awards at the conference and bring it back, we'll highlight each program a little bit more in depth, and some of them you know about more than others. But the Youth Crisis Stabilization Center, as you know, it's our 24/7 center, offers short-term support for Johnson County youth ages 10, 17, experiencing behavioral health crisis, aiming to stabilize them and facilitate a safe return home. Eviction Mediation Pilot Program, and as you know, this program utilizes neutral mediators to help landlords and tenants resolve past rent disputes preventing evictions and homelessness. It successfully mediated 73% of cases, which is 273 of 374, in the year 2024, helping tenants avoid eviction judgments that can severely impact future housing projects. The third one is Summer Snack Packs, launched in the summer of 2024 by the Johnson County Aging and Human Services Department, and this program addressed childhood food insecurity during school breaks. It provided 403 kid-friendly lunch and snack bags to low-income families, ensuring access to nutritious meals. And then, lastly, but just as important, is our internal program, which is Leadership Empowers All People, or LEAP, which is our focus on high-performance organization and how we, how we go about our work with this organization. So, very proud of those four. I wanted you to know because it's out there in public, and when the, those of you that represent us at NACO come back with the awards, we will do some more highlighting on that. So, very proud of that and our teams. Last is a Siri report, and very quickly, unemployment rate was 3.4% in April of 2025 compared to 3% last year, so very similar. The year-to-date single-family homes in April were two, year-to, yeah, year-to-date, 2,335 compared to 2,159 the year before, and that's an 8% increase. The single-family building permits, we saw 18.5% increase from 546 to 647. And then, the total retail sales is in alignment with what we've been presenting, which is about a 2.7% increase to date. So, with that, Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Postock Ferguson. Absent any questions at this time, we'll move on to a couple of performance audit presentations from the county auditor's office. Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Doug Jones, County Auditor's Office.
Out in time.
This first audit we're presenting is focused on payment processes at the Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility Construction Project. Tanner Banyan and John Halliday conducted the audit, and we conducted the audit in accordance with the government auditing standards. We can get this to, there we go. This audit focused on evaluating Johnson County wastewater controls or documenting and approving work change directives and payment applications for the Nelson Facility Construction Project. We determined these processes or controls were operating as designed and provide reasonable assurance that billings are accurate. At more than a half billion dollars, the Nelson Facility Construction Project is the county's largest project to date. Effective oversight of applications for payment and work change orders are important for the overall financial accountability of high-value, multi-year capital construction projects by reducing the risks of errors, fraud, or mismanagement. Johnson County Wastewater protects public health through the safe collection, transportation, and treatment of wastewater. Their work protects public health and the environment by helping to protect the water quality of our rivers, lakes, and streams. We determined management and project partners designed and implemented an application payment process that follows contract requirements. We reviewed and compared the three largest applications for payment totaling about $22 million to the contract requirements. Payment applications had supporting documentation, appropriate retainage, and required approvals. We did not identify any instances of non-compliance or errors. We determined management and project partners had designed and implemented project requirements for work change directive processes. We reviewed and compared a sample of 29 work change directives totaling about $18.1 million with the internal control forms and processes that have been developed. Work change directives had appropriate documentation, authorizations, compliance checks, and timing and submissions. We did not identify any instances of non-compliance or errors in the work change directives that we reviewed. Because both the application for payment and work change directive processes and controls are operating as designed, and we did not identify any gaps or errors, we make no recommendations. Although we make no recommendations, the audit does provide the Board of County Commissioners with independent assurance on the effectiveness of financial controls and processes for a project valued at more than a half billion dollars. This information can help the Board in their oversight role for this multi-year project. Continuing to follow these controls and processes reduces risks of the project running off schedule or costing too much and helps ensure ratepayer interests are protected. In brief, we assessed Johnson County Wastewater's controls over the documenting and approving payment applications and work change directives for the Nelson Wastewater Treatment Facility Construction Project. We determined management had designed and implemented appropriate controls. Our testing showed these processes provided reasonable assurance, the billings are accurate, the controls in place reduce the risks of errors, fraud, loss, mismanagement, or inaccurate payments. I want to thank staff and management for the Johnson County Wastewater for their cooperation and input throughout this audit. Now that I'm done with my very brief presentation, I'm happy to turn it over to management to discuss their response. Following that, we'll answer any questions you have about the audit or the response.
Thank you, Ms. Pecarick.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Susan Pecarick with Wastewater. I will be brief. I just simply want to thank the audit department for their audit. As you all know, since we've been in front of you many times regarding the Nelson project, it's a very complex project and a large project, and I, we truly appreciate the audit department taking the time to understand the contract requirements and the internal controls, pardon me, that we put into place to ensure that we are taking care of the, I should have brought my water with me, taking care of properly, taking care of invoice applications and work change directives. I'll be happy to answer any questions, I'm going to stop since I'm joking.
Thank you, Ms. Pecarick, Mr. Jones. Sounds like a pretty good audit. Questions, Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for the detailed report and the way you presented this, I really appreciate that. And again, just kudos to the department for their working with you and, and Susan Pecarick, who's trying to get her voice back. Job well done, thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jones, how many hours were expensed on this audit?
660 hours.
Thank you.
I just want to underscore the importance of having a county auditor as, as an opportunity when we think about what our oversight and due diligence is as policymakers, having, having a system where we have that third party that can delve into big audit questions. In this case, it was around a really big project that manages a lot of resources and, and, you know, wonderful outcome. That's quite a nod to the department and, and your fiscal management and your efficiencies and your adherence to policies and procedures, and that checks and balances is an important part of the work that we do. So, Mr. Jones, I appreciate the work of your department in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions at this time, how about round two?
One more to go. I'll wait till that gets booted up. Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Doug Jones, County Auditor's Office. This performance audit was focused on payment processes in the contractor licensing program. Michelle Cleveland and Kyra Springer conducted the audit. We conducted this audit in accordance with government auditing standards. The audit objective was to determine if processes for handling license and education payments are effective and payments are accurately recorded and comply with the county's accounts receivable policies and procedures. We determined the payment processes were effective with sufficient controls to assist accuracy and compliance. Management implemented new processes for handling license and education fees. They asked us to take a look at those and give them an assessment. Contractor licensing helps protect the public by ensuring individuals and businesses are properly qualified to perform construction work in unincorporated areas and 14 cities in Johnson County and Leavenworth Counties. The Contractor Licensing Division processes an average of over 6,000 transactions totaling about $1.1 million per year for licenses and education. We determined management in the Contractor Licensing Division designed appropriate controls for handling payments. Payments are processed in the Contractor Licensing System according to procedures. Payments are properly recorded and reconciled in the county's systems. Cash and checks are safeguarded and deposited timely. We determined Contractor Licensing's internal policies and procedures comply with county policy. They include all applicable controls defined in county administrative policy and are reconciled by the Contractor Licensing Staff and Treasury Staff. These controls are important for fiscal accountability, ensuring license requirements are met, and reducing risks of errors. Our testing showed these processes were implemented and working as intended. The controls in place reduce the risk of fraud, loss, or inaccurate reporting. During the audit, we did note the processes for recording payments into the county's financial system is a multi-step process with several manual tasks. Neither the online payment system or the Contractor Licensing System are directly linked to interface with each other or the county's financial management system. The process is not unique to Contractor Licensing. Multiple departments use separate payment processing systems and require similar multi-step manual processes. County management recognized there are functionally and support shortcomings in these current systems and is evaluating a new enterprise licensing and permitting system. County management developed a requirement analysis charter for the new enterprise system. We reviewed the document and noted it did not include requirements for evaluating integration with the county's financial management system, Oracle, and the project team did not include a member from the Treasury Department to assist in evaluating this integration. Integration between the new permitting system and the county's financial management system could better automate and streamline payment processing and revenue recognition in the accounting system. We made recommendations to the county manager's office to include requirements for the new permitting and licensing system to interface with the county's financial management system and add staff from Treasury to the project team. The program manager, department director, and county manager's office all agreed with our recommendations and are taking actions to implement them. So, in brief, management in the Contractor Licensing Division designed processes to handle payments that align with county policy and are working as intended. We noted an opportunity to streamline future processes between the new licensing system and the financial management system. Management agreed and is taking steps to implement the audit recommendations. I want to thank staff and management from Planning, Contractor Licensing, and the county manager's office for their cooperation and input throughout this audit. Now that I'm done with this presentation, management's here to discuss their response, and following that, we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leipzig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director. Just wanted to thank the audit staff, County Auditor Doug Stone for his work, and also the team of Michelle Cleveland, Kyra Springer, they were very helpful, the audit was well organized. They had great questions for us in terms of providing responses to our questions that we had as we went through this process, so I do appreciate that. It was very collaborative and very forthcoming for that, that information for us. Staff also agrees with the, with the recommendations. I, I think it just reiterates the comments I made a couple of weeks ago about our, the digital plan review software. The intention was to always include that financial management piece that can be integrated in, in with Oracle through our, through our process so that we don't have additional steps that are needed, so we kind of eliminate some of those redundancies. So, we're very aware of that, looking at that, and, and, but I'm pleased with the results of the audit. Also, I acknowledge Keira King for her work, our Contractor Licensing Program Manager, for her great work in, in creating these processes. As, as you know, we requested this, so it's been very helpful to us to, to make sure and understand that we are utilizing those best practices.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leipzig. Mr. Norris?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said at the Audit Committee where that the requirements are in the RFI that we issued last November, and the integration is noted in that document. And so, that will inform the RFP, which pending budget approval, we would, we would reflect those requirements in the RFP, and that has been the plan all along.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Questions or comments on another good audit? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Our budget, please.
This audit was 564 hours.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
All right. I believe the last item on today's agenda prior to Commissioner comments and our study session this evening is the proposed 2026 budget for Consolidated Fire District Number Welcome back, Mr. Francis.
Good afternoon, Jim Francis, Fire Service Administration. I should note before we get started that Chief Morley, the fire chief, is here, and I should also state that if it wasn't for his willingness and cooperation, we wouldn't be here today, along with this fire board, so Chief Morley, thank you. Okay, the, combining these budgets, District Two and District One, we end up with a total assessed valuation for next year's budget of $1,899,000 and some change. That's overall about an 8.4% increase. The District Two side of the line had a, around a nine and a half or a little over that increase. The District One side had a little less than that, but combined 8.4. With the taxes, fees, special projects, deployments, pilot payments, and interest payments, we're looking at revenues of $6.8 million. We have contract fees slightly over $600,000, and the combined reserve funds equal about $4.6 million. So, total revenues for this new district is slightly over $22 million. Now, when we spoke and spoke to Gardner and Edgerton officials and Spring Hill officials last fall, and we were before this body in December, we had some projections. I'm happy to announce that we're delivering with those projections. They were pretty much spot on from what we anticipated on where we, what we're going to show you here in a second. So, the total mill levy for District One today, now it's a little less for Gardner because Gardner's only paying one bond. Their general fund levy is $14.296, and then they have two bonds, 1.127, 1.477, totaling $6.9. We're able to reduce this to a general fund levy of $13.768. fund levy of 13.768, and the bond levies go down slightly with the increased values, so 16.310. That's a total levy reduction for the District One side of .59 mill reduction. Then on the District Two side, applying that same general fund levy of 13.768, you'll see the, the bond values came up a little, so we were able to lower those slightly. But we went from 15.264 this year to propose 15.060, a reduction of .204 mills. General Fund expenses contain a 4.5% salary increase, and I will tell you, we've been in the process of updating salary studies. That's done every year. The district historically, District One employees, uh, have ranked seventh out of eight departments in Johnson County. So, we're trying to gain some traction there. But what we don't know is how much of an increase those other entities and municipalities are going to give. But we're always chasing that. The goal would be to be somewhere in the middle. Addition of three firefighters, and that goes back to when the station was open, Station 81 at the Intermodal in Edgerton. There were no people hired to staff that building, and the district's really been playing catch-up ever since. So, where there were three people added this year, we're proposing three more people next year, keeping the minimum staffing requirements the same. That reduces the overtime amount paid out and enhances staffing, and I'll get into that here a little bit. Also, this budget also includes transitioning three fire lieutenant positions that exist today at the Spring Hill Station and reclassifying those lieutenants as captains, and that's being done for operational reasons. That cost is approximately 25,000. And then the, the big expense, which I'll talk more about here as we get into this, the, the big capital need of this district is fire truck replacement. Right now, they have three pumper trucks that are approaching 10 years old that are all on lease purchase, final payment this year on lease purchase agreements. We'd like to pay cash for those, and we're developing and have developed a plan to be able to do that and eliminate paying the high interest we've been paying by doing lease purchases. So, 425,000 would go towards a special truck replacement project, 200,000 transfer into reserves to fund future capital. The, the district has seen some significant healthcare increases, so we've increased that line item to 875,000, and we've budgeted an additional 50,000, um, to enhance the email system, the computer software programs, and the security that comes with that by moving fully into Johnson County IT for their assistance. Some of that 50,000 is a one-time expense to, to transfer file data. And then, as I stated earlier, 4.6 million in reserves would move forward, so expenses slightly over 22 million. So, let me talk briefly about the contracts. Oval and Park contracts, a 6% increase is projected. Now, that contract, we pay actual cost at the end of every quarter. 2024 budget, we actually came in under about 150,000 below what we budgeted. We're hopeful that that's going to happen again. Miami County revenue is 410,000. That's for the 73 square miles we provide in north central Miami County. And Miami County has asked us to take on a couple of other areas, um, one in the northeast corner that would be responded to by Oval and Park. The contract would be with this district because this district pays those salaries and owns those assets. And then west of Hillsdale Lake Street, south of Edgerton, there's another area that they would like us to take on. Now, some of these areas, we're currently going there for no funds. We're going there on mutual aid. But Miami County would like us to start taking on this responsibility where we get paid for that. The call volume is very minimal. It's about 25 calls a year on either side. So, it, you know, it's, it's not very much activity. And then the existing contracts with New Century total 120. So, with all these changes, the plan is, we've been in discussion with Oval and Park officials to renegotiate an agreement, to align these agreements together with the Miami County, to change the verbiage that reflects the changes we're making today. So, that's going to be happening in the fall and in January. The same thing with Miami County to address these changes. So, let me talk briefly about the staffing. I talked about adding three firefighters. Today, the district is at 23 people on duty between five fire stations with a minimum of 19. Last year, they were at 22. Year before that, they were at 21. So, two years ago, they only had a cushion of two. A study that we did last year in a 12-month period illustrated that there were somewhere in the neighborhood 27,000, 28,000 hours of leave, all types of leave taken. Well, when you do the math, that was like 3.4 or 5 people off per shift. They only had a cushion of two. They were potentially in an overtime situation every day. So, these people, extra staff, eliminates that, and, and it, and it has many other benefits as well. So, we're proposing three new hires next year, bringing the staffing to 24 on duty with a minimum of 19. Our goal would be met if we could add three more people in 2027. We'd have a cushion of six. That would meet our relief factor, and it would handle the increased call load and, and growth that's occurring in the district as well. So, what's the advantage of these extra people? Number one is the reduction of overtime expenses. You know, NFPA standards say that we need to have four people on a fire truck, for a fire company. We're not meeting that now most of the time. This would help us. We wouldn't be there totally every day, but it helps us getting closer to that. A much larger percentage of time, we'd be at four people. It also allows, when staffing is, is high and we're not at minimum levels, we can put another resource in, and that would be called Squad 82, the busiest station in Gardner on 183rd Street, and allows us to run two units simultaneously out of that building. Chief, you want to speak to that?
Uh, Chief Morley, Fire Chief, Fire District Number One. So, by, um, and I think it's important to include, with the staffing, we'd have the ability to staff that vehicle, but we already own the vehicle. And so, it's not an additional piece of equipment that we have to purchase, but it's going to give us the ability to have more rescuers on the road, more firefighters on the road, in an area that's really impacted by back-to-back calls. It's also optimally positioned that it doesn't just provide, um, Station 82 is in Gardner. It's the busiest fire station that we have in our jurisdiction, but it's also optimally positioned to provide services into Edgerton and Spring Hill, um, along with Gardner. So, it really bolsters our ability to have more rescuers, more providers on the road, um, with, without the, the increase of having or without the need to expense another vehicle. And then it puts us in an optimal position to be able to provide that service, not just to one community, but to all three communities and the unincorporated parts of the county.
Thank you. So, let me talk about capital. For next year's capital projects would be the truck replacements. Now, what we would plan to do is come before this body in January, after the district is created, with a financial plan and a desire to purchase three fire trucks. Now, what we don't know yet is the lead time, the delivery time on those trucks. We know that regardless of the vendor, we're not going to have any new trucks before 2028, and there's a high likelihood it might be 2029 or after. So, we have time to pay for it, and we have time to fund a funding plan to pay cash for these trucks rather than do lease purchase agreements. So, we've, we've developed a plan, and we're in the process of working through those details on that. But you can see, you know, one of these pumper trucks, that, you know, I came before this body in January '22 and bought trucks for 850,000. That same truck today is a million 50. So, costs are going skyrocketing, and, uh, so we're looking at roughly three and a quarter million to replace these. But we've got plenty of time to fund this, um, but we're going to have to put some serious money in reserves and truck replacement fund to do so. Let me talk about the budget timeline and where we've been so far. So, Commissioner Brewer asked earlier about the Advisory Board and the creation of that. Well, since we don't have the Advisory Board right now, we've kind of gone the extra step to include the voices of our municipalities in the district. So, Chief Morley and I and staff met with Edgerton officials last Wednesday, Gardner officials last Wednesday, and Spring Hill officials last Tuesday, and we previewed this information with them and got their input. Um, I can tell you, they, uh, it was very well received. We didn't have any questions or concerns. So, it was, all three meetings were very favorable. So, those meetings occurred last week. The District One Board met Tuesday at 4:00 PM on a work session. They also reviewed this same information. There were no questions, no concerns, so that was a very favorable meeting as well. So, here we are today. The next step, and what's been determined after meeting with council on this and trying to figure, and, and I should state that Ted Clemens and Mark Depp from the Budget Office, I owe them tremendous thanks as well, because this has been a, a challenging process to figure out how we do a district for the first time in the budget process. The people from TTV and Ted and Mark, there's been interaction with the state, giving us guidance on how to do this. So, what we've come up with, we want to err on the side of over-communicating, and we are going to have, what we're proposing here is on July the 8th, District One's Board meets. They will authorize publication and do the revenue-neutral rate and set the public hearing for their bonds and for the general fund of Consolidated Fire District One. I'll be back here on July 17th to do the same thing. You'll have the District Two bonds and the general fund for Consolidated District One. And then August 21st, the District One Board and this body has a joint work session and a joint public hearing on August 21st at 1:00 PM. They're going to publish, and we have to publish in the Miami County paper, we have to publish in the legal record. Both entities are going to publish. The bonds are going to be separate until the bonds are paid off. So, it's, it's gotten very complicated on how we, how we do this. So, there's been a lot of interaction with the state, with TTV, Budget Office, to try and figure out how, how to do this. So, then August 14th is, is your work session with all fire districts, and then August 28th, final action, sitting as the BOCC. In summary, 8.4% value increase, ending reserve fund balance of 4.8 million, which is about 26% of the operations budget. We're going to update these contracts, and the staffing increases to 24 personnel with a minimum of 19. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Albrecht?
Um, thank you, Chair. Wow. It's been a long five years, right? And I know this has been a long time in process, but, um, I, I want to thank you both for all the work that you've done, and also the Fire One Board. Um, I can't thank several of those board members and the hours of going to meet each one of the shifts and talking to the firefighters and, um, the commitment they made by sometimes getting up, beat up in the community for trying to make a change. Um, you're, you're thanking all the staff, you know, the budget staff, Brent Christensen and his staff, and just coming together and working with, um, the Fire One staff and pulling everybody together and, um, in doing that, creating so many innovative ways that makes life better for everyone, which gives you more time to take care of the things that you need to take care of. Um, I also, um, want to say, um, I want to make sure that we thank all those people, but, you know, we, we're, we have to find a time, and I know that some of the things that we've put in place, firefighters, you know, paying for their own wellness checks, um, you know, taking time off for training and getting educated, and we've, we fixed all those. But I think the other hard thing is we need to take care of our firefighters and their salaries. When you hear, here we are in Johnson County and their wages are so low, and it's not just this fire station, I also, Northwest Consolidated, you know, their, um, salaries that, as a community, we need to come together and figure that out. So, um, I know that's one thing that I'm going to be working on. Um, I appreciate my fellow commissioners here and, um, working through this process, and, um, uh, again, I just can't say enough, um, thank you. And, you know, it's really good that now those conversations going on with those cities, they're, um, they're, um, employing and working together and seeing the benefits. And I also want to thank Legal. Um, you know, we're looking at those bylaws, and we wanted to make sure that, that they were included, and, um, they're excited about that. So, thank you for all your work, and, uh, Chairman, thank you for giving me a little leeway.
Sure. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Francis, because of scheduling, I really haven't had a chance to look at this, but I would appreciate some time before our July meeting allow me to pick at you a little bit. Um, and I did want to take a moment, though. Uh, Chief Morley, uh, I offered, um, congratulations in respect to Mr. Francis, but I will tell you, over the last number of years, um, in large measure, if not, um, the pivot point for this successful effort goes to you. You stood up where others, uh, were either unwilling or unable. Uh, you had to break out of a mode and tradition. That is tough to do, particularly in the fire service, because you're heaped in, in tradition. I respect that, but I, I respect you, sir.
Thank you very much, Chief. Um, Mr. Francis, when we come back in July, in the interest of time, I'm not going to get into the weeds too deep with you today, but I want to better understand the proposed contract for service with Miami County, understanding that it was previously mutual aid and additional revenues, great, but what is the district we're going to be covering? I understand you say it's 25 calls, but I wanted to just maybe, I understand Johnson County better than I understand Miami County. So, to, to understand the, um, the area, the potential growth in the area, how that might impact service calls in the future, just something I'll be asking you about when we get back together.
And I, and just, I can give you a brief synopsis of it. This is primarily very rural in nature. There's no additional people required. There's no additional apparatus required, no additional stations or anything like that. This is existing people, existing truck, making an occasional call across the county line.
Understood. Looking forward to discussing it.
Okay.
Commissioner Brewer?
Uh, just two quick questions. One was a similar question, but a little bit different than Commissioner Kelly's, I mean, Chairman Kelly's. Um, we have a contract now with Spring Hill, right?
No.
No, we don't.
Not anymore.
Okay.
Um, they're part of the district now, so that contract was eliminated at the end of last year.
Does, does that coverage include this part of Spring Hill that goes into Miami County already?
Yeah, so that's part of our district now. So, it's, it's all part of District Two today, and will be part of Consolidated District One, January 1st.
The one, the reason I ask that is because if we've, we're already covering that part, then what you're talking about regarding other part, would be other parts of Miami?
Yeah, we, we actually cover south of Spring Hill limits in Miami County now, and we have for approximately 30 years.
Okay.
The new part that's being asked is a little bit west of that.
Okay.
And it's more straight south of Gardner and straight south of Edgerton than it is south of Spring Hill.
That gives me a, a better understanding. And then, I just had a question about reserves. Um, is there a reserve policy that was billed as you're putting this together? Because I, I'm, I'm looking at some of these numbers and wondering if part of that reserve was...
We don't have a reserve policy for say, but, um, we know where we need to be to fund future capital items, and that's our only means of funding that.
Yeah.
And the analysis we've done so far is that we're going to have to fund approximately a million a year in '27 and '28 to fund the truck replacement and the reserves to write a $3.25 million check in 2028. That will take our reserve balance down to 20%. So, we know we have to fund it by at least a million. Next year, we're putting 625. The good news is, '27 and '29 budget, we have many buildings that are currently abated coming on the tax rolls, and we know we're going to have a large influx of assessed valuation on those years that are going to help us do that. So, we're confident that we can pay for these apparatuses with cash and not do lease purchases and save the district a lot of money in interest income.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Looking forward to further conversations on the Consolidated Fire District Number One. Thank you both very much.
Chairman, one last thing. I'd be remiss if there was a guy sitting here that I need to give credit to, and that's Adam and Joe Connor before him, because as you guys know, they've done a lot of heavy lifting as well. So, thank you very much.
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Norris, and to Mr. Connor, may he be on a golf course right now.
right now. All right. Thank you all for a very good meeting. We do have Commissioner comments. We will have a study session later, I just note that for everybody. But we'll start with Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Allenbrand.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Well, I, I'm not going to hit on all the other things that I attended, but I do want to say that I attended the designation, Gardner designation of downtown area, and also the, the, I'm like caught off guard here. Anyway, the roads, transportation. I also have sent over to my fellow commissioners the Airport Board Commission meeting notes. I want to keep doing that so that you keep updated. I want to give a special thanks. You saw the incident that happened out at New Century Airport, and there was no injuries and no fire, so that was handled. And I want to give a shout out to Jody Hanson and Andy for getting out information ahead of time, and we felt like that really helped with the overall of that incident. So I also want to say a shout out to Brian Peat. I'm hoping I can make his reception tomorrow. He's been a delight to work with and has helped many times on weekends when there's been incidences that happen. Of course, it always, always does. So anyway, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Allenbrand, Brian Peat was here, but he snuck out before we had an opportunity.
I know, I saw that.
So quickly, Mr. Chairman, since our last meeting, there were a couple of committee reports, and just briefly, the C D, the Community Corrections Advisory Board, routine meeting, nothing to report particularly. J C D S met. There will be some incidental budget items coming back before us in the near future. And I just wanted to point out that one of our newest ACM, Darren Liker, has had a birthday on the twenty-third, so happy birthday, Darren. I know it's not Texas, but I hope you're having a good time here. And, Mr. Chairman, there was a monumental event that's being celebrated this coming Monday on the thirtieth. It's Commissioner Brewer's birthday. Happy birthday.
Oh.
Thank you. Commissioner Brewer, why don't you go ahead?
That's kind of hard to follow. One, I wanted to echo many of the accolades that were given for the county's Juneteenth event. I have not been to all of them, but I've been to the majority of them, and it is wonderful to see how that event not only grows in activities, but it grows in attendance every year, and the speakers are always amazing. And you learn a lot about the history of our community through lifting up voices, through storytelling. I also echo Commissioner Allenbrand's earlier comments about the expansion of the budget open houses. Commission District Three was also new this year to be able to host a budget open house. And I'll just state again, we've had so many robust budget hearings. I really encourage community members to go back to those meetings and see those videos as you're thoughtful about input or thoughts you want to share with us on budget as we, you know, ramp up to getting to that budget hearing. I'd love to hear your thoughts in advance. Many thanks to the Overland Park Christian Church, Project Ten Twenty, United Community Services, and other partners through the Coalition, the C O C, sorry, I was having a senior moment, for standing up the Cooling Center on June nineteenth. The Cooling Center is open on holidays in which other facilities, such as library and community centers, might be closed, limiting spaces for folks experiencing homelessness or experiencing lack of amenities within their own housing solutions to be someplace safe and cool. We actually lose more people to heat-related illnesses than we do to cold-related illnesses. So as we see our community having warmer days more frequently, this is important, and it was wonderful to see teamwork and action. I had an opportunity to meet with the Dialogue Institute and working with Commissioner Myers on some future opportunities with some of our work internally in the county and the Dialogue Institute, and also Workforce Development Partnership Meeting, including a meeting on a grant that Workforce Partnership received through the Kaufman Foundation, working around the issue of folks who are coming out of corrections, either at the state or county levels, back into the workforce and having, making sure that that system is allowing folks to be successful as they re-enter the workforce. With that, I think that's enough. I'll pass it on to you, Commissioner Myers.
Coach?
In the interest of time, no report. Commissioner Fast.
I'll just say, I was elated to get notified last week about the eviction mediation award, and I haven't gone previously to NACO in the summer, and I had been planning on going to Philadelphia, so I'll be there for the award presentation on that. Also, in twenty twenty, we started the Negro Creek renaming process with the renaming committee, wide breadth of community members, and then we've had a lot of change over at Leewood, Overland Park, committee members. Last week, Adam, Susan, and I met with the city manager, mayor, and staff at Leewood, and they have found a spot for the sign. The committee decided not to rename. Overland Park has found their spot, too. We've been working with them. And so the cities are coming to agreement, what's on the sign. So we're hoping this fall that we have the Negro Creek, and it's no longer renaming its Negro Creek history on the Negro Creek, so you will all be notified when we finally get a date on that. I'm also on the NACO Human Services Committee. Some of the good news happening on the Senate bill, the reconciliation bill, the parliamentarian has struck a lot of things, is not applicable. One of these things was capping provider taxes. Provider taxes are critical for Kansas and all states to pay for the match. Feds pay sixty percent, Kansas pays forty percent on Medicaid, and Kansas uses, like most states, these provider taxes. The other thing, a lot of counties across the nation pay administer SNAP, and they were, that bill has been moving over more of that administration and funding to counties and the state, and some of that, the parliamentary ruled out of order, the Senate could bring, you know, individual bills to, you put that legislation in. But right now, part of those harmful components have been pulled out from the parliamentarian.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, I'll just mention a few of the activities I attended this past week. This morning, we had our opioid work group on Tuesday, the Mid-America Regional Council Board meeting, attended a community mental health forum, and last week, Bill Mossen's retirement. He was and is an incredible member of our J C P R D staff who was instrumental in acquiring a lot of the land that we now enjoy as part of our park system. Speaking of retirement, I too want to thank Brian Peat. It has been a pleasure to learn from him, to be able to consult with him, and he will be very, very much missed. Unfortunately, I have a Mark Transit meeting at the same time as his retirement reception tomorrow, so I will be unable to attend, but please know that I very much appreciate the opportunity to work with you, Brian.
Thank you very much. Again, in the interest of time, I won't go through too many things, but I do want to mention a few, and one is to congratulate Brian Peat and Bill Mossen on their retirements, and to welcome, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there this morning, Advent Health to Lenexa, the first full-service hospital there in Lenexa. And to have a brand-like Advent there helps partner with the county to keep us safe and healthy, which remains a focus area for this board. Like Commissioner Fast and along with Commissioner Myers, I'll be heading to Philadelphia here in the next two weeks. I am the co-chair of the National Association of Counties World Cup Caucus and look forward to continuing our conversations on how all host regions can prepare for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We will take two weeks without meetings. There are still, there's still so much going on. It allows our staff and commissioners the time to work on the various projects that eventually find their way coming to the board here. In that meantime, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Independence Day, and please stay safe and celebrating Fourth of July as we recognize our collective efforts to securing life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we can recognize the times that we're in. We don't have to hyper-normalize everything that is going on, and so I appreciate everybody continuing to recognize the collective voices that you have to hold your government in check. I was also very pleased and honored to be invited to the Meet in the Middle Summit last week with leaders from the Kansas State Legislature, the State House, and other communities across the state of Kansas, as we talk about how we can continue to set policy together that will allow us to address the challenges we have, whether it be economic development, housing, property taxes, education. So know that those efforts continue, and I'm grateful to have colleagues at all levels of government working together on those ends. To that extent, we're going to continue our work today. We will have a brief break, and at about two-ten, come back for a study session on our comprehensive health assessment. I'm very much looking forward to that. So absent objection from the rest of the board, we will be downstairs in the basement for that study session. The lower level, excuse me, use proper terminology, absent objection from anyone, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. I will ask my fellow commissioners that during your lunch break, can you see, Michelle, we have paperwork that everybody needs to sign, so please, Megan, gosh.
That's all right. I'm a twin, I agree.
Please see Megan, and thank you for taking the time to sign the requisite documents.
What time is the study session?
Two-ten.
What time were you?